I am calling to order the Panama City Commission meeting for November 18th at 4:30 PM. We're going to start by an opening prayer by Reverend Friday, pastor of Living Waters Ministries, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Commissioner Granger. Please rise.
Let us pray. Father God, we thank you for another day that you've given us. We thank you for your loving kindness and your grace, your mercy. And Father, I pray that you would give us your divine insight tonight. Even Lord, as these proceedings go forward, I, God, I pray that you would speak into the minds and the hearts of our commissioners and our mayor, God guiding them, Father, that they might utilize your righteous agenda in coming up with answers for this community. God, that you might be glorified and that your name might be praised. In Jesus' name I pray, amen.
Amen.
You'll join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please call the roll.
Mayor Branch?
Present.
Commissioner Granger?
Present.
Commissioner Street?
Here.
Commissioner Hughes?
Here.
Commissioner Lucas?
Present.
Mayor, you have a form.
You've received the meeting minutes from October 28th. Do you have a motion to accept?
To move.
Say.
Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Commissioner Granger?
Yes.
Commissioner Street?
Yes.
Commissioner Hughes?
Yes.
Commissioner Lucas?
Yes.
Mayor Branch?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Any additions, deletions, or modifications to?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Item 6 Bravo, the applicant has requested it be removed regarding mixed use at 1906 Louise Avenue. Again, item 6 Bravo, removed at the request of the applicant. Would request the commission remove it with no intent or expectation for it to return at this time.
Okay. Anyone else?
Mayor, I would like to defer, I'm asking to defer item 9K to the December 16th meeting. That was the Charter Officer Evaluations. The deadline for the December 16th is December 8th at Inde Business.
Okay, so removal of 9K and removal of 6B. Do you have a motion to accept?
A motion to remove 6B and defer 9K to the December meeting.
Second.
Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Commissioner Granger?
Yes.
Commissioner Street?
Yes.
Commissioner Hughes?
Yes.
Commissioner Lucas?
Yes.
Mayor Branch?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Community announcements. Please make note that during the months of November, December, there will only be one commission meeting per month to make accommodations for city and staff holiday schedules. The date for the next commission meeting will be Tuesday, December 16th, and the meeting will be held here at the Bay County Government Center beginning at 4:30 PM. The Harrison Avenue Streetscapes Project is coming to completion, and the city is celebrating with a ribbon-cutting ceremony at 2:00 PM on Monday, November 24th. A block party celebration will follow in downtown Panama City. The offices of the City of Panama City will be closed on Thursday, November 27th and Friday, November 28th in observance of the Thanksgiving holiday. Normal business hours will resume on Monday, December 2nd at 8:00 AM. Garbage and trash collections will not take place on Thanksgiving Day. Residential and commercial garbage collections, the Blue Cans, will resume the following day. December is full of holiday fun in Panama City. Celebrate the season with the Millville Christmas Parade on Friday morning, December 5th at 10:00 AM. The mayor and city commissioners and staff will participate in this beloved tradition alongside Bay District School students. For the parade route, check out our city website. Also, join us that evening downtown for a magical evening at the Center for the Arts at Four Points Plaza starting at 5:30 PM for the annual Downtown Christmas Tree Lining Ceremony. Let's light up the Christmas holiday season together. Get ready for the 2025 Downtown Christmas Parade in Panama City. It's going to be Saturday, December 6th, from 6:00 to 8:00 PM. This year's route begins at the Downtown Marina and travels north along Harrison Avenue all the way to Tommy Oliver Stadium. Also occurring in December is the 39th Annual Boat Parade of Lights, scheduled for September, December 13th, from 5:30 to 7:30 PM. Watch decorative boats travel from St. Andrews Bay from the Yacht Club west to the Hathaway Bridge. There are many ways to give back this holiday season. The Panama City Police Department will host its annual Blue Santa Gift Donation Program, and the city is partnering with Bay District Schools for its Giving Tree Program, both created to help children in Panama City this Christmas season. For more information and to learn how you can get involved with these two worthwhile efforts, visit panamacity.gov. Come join us for the MLK Rec Center soft opening on Monday, December 15th at 2:00 PM. A grand opening for the facility for the public is planned for later in January 2026. Never miss a beat. Sign up for City Communications to get important updates straight to your inbox or to your smartphone. From the monthly newsletter to real-time alerts, stay informed and engaged with what's happening in your community. Scan the QR code on the screen or visit our newly designed website at panamacity.gov to sign up today. All right, Mr. Mayor, moving into public hearings. Item 6A is the second and final reading to consider and approve ordinance 3274 adopting the proposed water and wastewater connection or impact fees of $1,350 per equivalent residential connection or ERC for water and $1,610 per ERC for wastewater to become effective February 16th of 2026. I'll just note that that date is required because it is 90 days from the time that the commission would adopt the ordinance. As background information, the City of Panama City continues to face increasing capital investment requirements necessary to expand water and wastewater system facilities to serve new growth. Connection fees are collected from new development to recover the city's investment in existing and future capacity that is available to serve this growth. The City Utilities Division has not updated our connection fees since 2003, and therefore, an updated connection fee increase is proposed to manage the increase and demand on current monthly utility rates. The current user fees were adopted by the commission on September 23rd of 2003 pursuant to ordinance 1914. Last year, during fiscal year 2025, the city hired Raftellus Financial Consultants to complete the water and wastewater impact fee study for the city's water and wastewater utility system. The report recommended the updated connection fees based on the cost of capital expenditures for both existing and new infrastructure to provide capacity to serve new development. The report proposes a water connection fee of $1,350 per ERC, which represents an increase of 885 compared to the existing 465, and a wastewater connection fee of $1,610 per ERC, which represents an increase of $360 compared to the existing 1250. The proposed water and wastewater impact fees will help offset the growth to the system, the cost of the growth to the system rather, that would otherwise have to be funded by current monthly user fees and will not become effective until Monday, February 16th of 2026. Staff recommends the city commission conduct the second and final public hearing of ordinance 3274 adopting the new ERC rate for water and wastewater beginning February 16th of 2026. Mr. Mayor Commissioners, as y'all directed at the last meeting, I did get together with representatives from the BBIA, as well as, I know Commissioner Hughes met with them and Mayor Branch, as well as City Engineer Stacy Rousch. We were willing to put forward a recommendation to move forward, as laid out here today, with Panama City North and for Panama City proper, move forward except raising the rate of the increase by 25% each year over the next four years. However, I do know that Mr. Nevin Zimmerman and Mr. Jared Jones did have a conversation with Raftellus today, and I believe that it's not quite that simple, and another rate study would be required at a pretty substantial expense. So I'll turn it over to Mr. Zimmerman and Mr. Jones to add clarity to that. Mr. Zimmerman?
The question that was asked is, is there a rational basis for treating Panama City North differently as far as an impact or connection fee as compared to Panama City proper or the historic Panama City area? And the answer is maybe, because you do have to have a reason. And there are a lot of reasons why the impact on the system from Panama City North could be greater than the impact on the system from greater Panama City. For example, you have to bring the flow, I'm thinking primarily of sewage right now, but the sewer has to go travel five, six miles to get to the treatment plants. And that is transmission infrastructure that's not part of downtown Panama or the downtown proper. So that is an additional cost. Probably lift stations are more expensive. There's a lot of reasons why the impact, the cost of the impact would be greater in Panama City North. But it has to be something that has been thought through and some rational basis for treating the system as two different service areas. Traditionally, a utility system is not separated by service areas. Everything is treated the same. Same cost for treatment capacity, same cost for lines. But it is possible to separate it. It has not been done that way. The study was, you have treated everything as one system, but it is possible to break out and treat Panama City North differently. There would be a cost. I don't know what the cost is, but it would take time. It's not something that there's already, the math has already been done and the analysis has been done, and it just wasn't prepared that way. That analysis separating the system hasn't been done. Another point may be that you need to save money for a future wastewater treatment plant in Panama City North. That's different than what you would be doing for downtown Panama City. So it's not, I can't say that a 25% increase of the impact fee in Panama City proper as opposed to 100% is there's a rational basis that Raftellus, who is our rate consultant, they can't sign off on it because they don't know. That might be right, but they'd have to do an analysis.
Did we have an estimate, Mr. Jones, on what that study might cost, even a slight range?
As it would be an entirely new study, these run between, and this is rough order of magnitude, between 40,000 and 60,000 depending on complexity. Treating the service areas as two different areas would add some complexity to this.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor?
Yes. This is a public hearing. If you wish to speak about item 6A, please come forward. Yes, sir.
Good evening. 14th Avenue, Maple Avenue, Panama City. I thought the city was already had all these things in order, planning north and just thought about. North had been out there for over 25 years. Got sewer already out there, handy prison. Got steel end manholes already set, put lift stations in. I know that, I know we got to grow. And the city has been know that. It ain't just, it just not came up, just not came up. These lines are already ran. Water is already ran. Don't have to run it. Might have been out there so long, I doubt it here anything destroyed it. But I just said that we are, I still own that wire that we can take folks that's not tied in the city sewer, and we don't get the taxes for them. That's how we about lost, that's why the beef about took Panama City over. Because we sit, sit down, didn't do nothing. We could be a better city than what we are today. But so I just sit there, did not do anything. We're still not doing anything. It's good. Counties giving a good break. They getting your tax money. But you don't have to, well, y'all don't want to put folks in that tied onto the city line. Make them a part of the city, of Panama City. It's helped to build streets. My street, I can tell you, my street hadn't been paid in over 20, close to 30 years. It hadn't been paid. I know y'all finna get rid of tear down, but those two were supposed to have been dead every 10 years. Every commissioner was supposed to get there in their district and get where they want to, could have a street paved in their district. It's had my hope happen. Might happen somewhere else, but it hasn't happened around my house. I got a pretty good street, but still, the job is not being done.
Yes, sir, thank you. Anyone else on item 6A?
Good evening.
Good evening. Derek Thomas, 1100 West 10th Street. I feel that the rates are not being passed along evenly, like hooking up water to 19th Street, which used to be a wetland area. That's going to cost money going into a residential neighborhood that's already there, that already has the plumbing, is not going to require as much money. So to charge everybody the same rate in order to financially subsidize large housing projects, which are causing the actual problem with the infrastructure and adding a single-family house in a residential neighborhood doesn't really have that same impact. So to charge everybody the same across the board, I think that's not right. It's not just Panama City North and the main part of the city. It's new developments as opposed to adding on to existing infrastructure.
Thank you. Anyone else on item 6A? Seeing no more comments, closing public comments. I'll entertain a motion.
A motion that we approve, and I would like to discuss the memorandum that I provided.
You have a second?
I'll second for discussion.
Okay.
So I had provided this memorandum. I hope that y'all had time to digest it. But the basic idea was is that we raise the rates, but that we also make it to where people can pay on the raised rate over time. But depending on who that customer is, whether they're a new build or whether they're an older home. New build, they would pay what they currently pay today, and then they would be able to pay monthly on the remainder amount. The existing older homes, they would be able to pay over the course of many, near four years or so, the rate would just be divided by that many months. So it allows for two different scenarios where people would be coming on to the city's water and sewer systems and not necessarily hit them with a large bill. So any thoughts on the memo?
The only comment I had on that one was, how do we prevent a builder from basically just passing it on as a surprise to the person that purchases the house?
So I would suggest that in order to get, usually you don't establish a water account as one of the last things on a construction site because usually you'd need water. It's not necessarily the first thing you do, but it's also not one of the last things that you do. So the builder would wind up paying several months on the account and therefore on the impact fee. But they would have to disclose that at the time of closing. Otherwise, I mean, we have a real estate agent on the board. I mean, disclosure is part of that.
Up front, yes.
Yes. So, and in the event that somebody has an older home, they're on a septic tank, they're on a well, and all of a sudden, they're forced by the state to come on to Panama City water and sewer and then turn around and sell their home, they would also have to disclose that. So it would just be part of the disclosures of the home that, hey, this is something that you're buying into.
There's actually a section in the contract that allows for any assessments, which I'll call this, can either be paid at closing or paid after, and the buyer picks them up. See, that would be written into the, it was a checkbox on the contract. So that'd be part of.
I kind of have an overarching question. Like, does everybody, we like walked out last meeting with like four, like mine was like, hey, let's find a program, set it up for ship funds specifically for this specific piece. I didn't see that in this. I guess there's this other component that's here. There were four things that we walked out of last meeting of saying like, hey, alongside this policy decision, having these programs available, if I recall, last time. And I'm not really seeing those alongside this. Is that, did I miss something? I just want to make sure I didn't miss something because I kind of, I kind of thought we kind of hit pause because we had these like four action items to come back with alongside this. I know you guys have had meetings, so maybe they weren't relevant. So I'd just love to hear.
I think, I have a question for Nevin. We had talked about the 25%, maybe, and then going to 50 and 100. Can we do that if we do it to everybody in Panama, and not separate the two?
Yes.
Okay. And so what, I think, in my conversation with one of members of the Home Builders Association, their angst, if you will, is it just, here it is, surprise. And you got to figure that out. But they're okay with it, but just as it all comes up, can we parcel it out? And I think the 25 and 50, go to 25% today, 50% next year, and 100% the following year after that. And that's, there's 25% today, that's all you're going to face.
Is that in this?
As an example, as my conversation with him. And that way, you wouldn't need any of the disclosures or any of the extra money because it's paying the, whoever's building the house, pulling the permit, they're paying that right now.
So I would say that if support is contingent upon programs for assistance being provided alongside this, then we should have that kind of settled. So, because that's what happened last time. Like, I walked in like one thing, I'm like, hey, if we do this, like, I'm good. But then there were like multiple other things that were with that, and then so we kind of stepped back. But I also didn't have conversations with the Builders Association afterwards. I didn't have those. So if there's, if it's resolved, then that's fine. If it's not, then I'd like us to resolve it or have a mapped plan to resolving it in which it comes back to the commissioners at date before these things get implemented. So that's another way that this could work.
From my perspective, after my conversation with them, they're okay with that tiered system?
Yeah.
But Jonathan, did you get back in touch with them after our conversation about?
Well, I didn't get any really feedback that there was an issue with it until late this afternoon, the whole tiered approach. So, but here's the thing. So I think I agree with you, Commissioner Hughes. Let's just do the tiered approach for everybody, but I would say potentially, let's drag it out even more. Let's say 50% for like the next year and a half, even maybe all the way into 2027, and then, you know, and then maybe up to 100% after that. You know, I wish there was a way to only do it for Panama City proper and not, you know, and go full speed for Panama City North. But again, absent some reason to differentiate or doing a whole nother study, I don't think we want to spend 60, 80K for that. So I would be willing, if you guys would support that, even maybe dragging it out a little bit longer since we're doing it for everybody to further help them out. Rather than having four different iterations, we could just consider having two and then maybe putting a longer period in between them, just as another option.
Jonathan, I have a question.
Yeah.
I don't remember that part when we were talking about it. I remember the extra help from the home, from the house mindset.
Yeah, so, yeah, so, yes, that program, and someone correct me if I'm wrong, but those options are already there. If you meet certain income, it's already there. And we are working to provide, I guess, better appearance, not appearance is the right word, but just more visibility on the website. But that already exists, you know, like utility type assistance, down payment assistance, all of that stuff. Go ahead, Mr. Jones.
Yes, our current local housing action plan does include utility assistance with that, includes deposit assistance, whether that's power, water, sewer, or anything else, with the exception of like internet or things like that.
So let me be clear what I'm looking for that does not exist today. A very clear path for the builder, because all the guys that were here last time, those are all small builders. They're building for one homeowner. Like, that's it. They're not going out and building 100 homes or anything else like that. If they don't know about it, we're obviously not communicating it. So someplace clearly on the website, how much money are we allocating to that program? That's the other thing. I don't want to like get into it, and then all of a sudden, we've got, you know, 50 bucks designated to the program. I want to understand, like, hey, there's this much allocated to this specific program for utility assistance and offsetting these impacts for affordable housing. Because what we are doing right now, if we do not have that clearly advertised and clearly notated, we are increasing the cost of affordable housing in the city.
As long as the builder has a buyer that qualifies, I don't see any issue with that. I think that's where it gets a little tricky is in order to access those ship funds, if they've got a buyer that qualifies, it's no issue. But I'm happy to.
Under the current program parameters, but I'm also looking for price point incentives. Like, if somebody's building a home in a certain amount of price point, like, I'm looking for something that says, hey, you don't have to pay utility fee. Or, hey, we offset this utility fee because you're building in this exact price point, if that makes sense.
So what you're suggesting may be a new incentive because what is existing has program rules that we have to follow for the existing program. So what I'm hearing is an incentive that we want to create, perhaps.
I'm happy to bring that back as it's, I believe it still fit under our, like, our down payment assistance and deposit assistance. So I'll read back through the L-HAP, and then I gladly provide Mr. Hayes a policy recommendation.
The overarching, the way to create a mechanism that helps expedite the affordable housing is by just focusing on price point. And so that includes smaller lot sizes. It could be smaller homes. It could be these kind of incentive programs that help reduce that overall cost, gifting land. Like, all of those things work together to creating a runway of affordable homes that people can afford to buy. You know, that's the piece. Yes, I understand we have income-qualified applicants that come in through our program, but I'm looking for things that we can equip our builders to build the type housing stock that our people need. And that's what I'm specifically focused on.
And I agree, but what, you got to get past the impact fee first before those incentives show up. So to say, we'll give you 50% off, to say, the builders, and if they're building in affordable housing and you build in this price point, and I agree, your price point's very important, and in a certain, you know, certain size house, now you're getting a family in there, we'll give you, there's some incentives that you can apply for. But you got to get, so you're helping on the front end by the 50%. And then they're getting help because their buyer qualifies? Or I don't, or is it, they just get that because they're building in an affordable area? I don't know. So I think both work. Yours is a step two, I think, to get, we got to have step one first to get to that point. Because they're getting a break up front and under this idea of 50 and 100, if you extend it out, right?
So back to step one. If we stretch it out and stretch it out, we'll be within a year of our next mandated five-year study and having to raise it again.
And that would be 2030 because we did it in 2025.
So.
Just as a point of clarification, it's not mandated, but it is recommended. I mean, we haven't touched these fees in 20 years, and so we wouldn't be at the point where we're ripping the Band-Aid, if you will, to the degree we are today.
So we have some option as to whether we.
If we looked at these every five years as large associations recommend, this would be an incremental increase instead of so dramatic as it is today.
So just from a mathematical standpoint, if we go with what I have presented here,
So just from a mathematical standpoint, if we go with what I have presented here, there's no real reason to step it out and say, well, we're going to be 50% at this time and then 100% later. Because what it allows for is it allows for the builder to pay what they're currently paying now. And then anything above that would, they would be able to pay on it monthly. So, but the idea is, is that the house would be sold by a certain point in time in the future. And so really all they're saving is, I mean, it's very, it's kind of normal.
So it's a, it's a problem, and there's like four proposed solutions here to it. I mean, that's what I got last time.
I'm okay with the.
And I think that we're at that same spot. You're at a tiered approach, you're divided up over the, the bill. I'm at creating incentive programs. Alan's quiet. And Janice is just trying to figure out how do we navigate through that to get, to get passed on the, on the lake. That's kind of what I'm getting the safety reel last time.
For the purpose of deliberation.
One man's announcement.
For the purpose of deliberation, just know that impact fees are paid prior to the CO being issued. So if we allow people to make payments, I mean, that's, we're going to have to change the system in order to adopt that. Because we, we do require impact fees to be paid prior to the CO being issued.
It's got to be paid upfront.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Stretching it out, 25%, 50%, doesn't that put us in the same situation?
He's paying 50, no, about 25% of their proposed fees. So we would, we would gradually increase it.
Yeah.
Existing homes.
Yeah. When we say the, the, either, yeah, when we say the 25 over four years or the 50% and the 100%, as Commissioner Hughes has suggested, that's 50% of the increase. So it would be about $600. And then, you know, I think 2027, it would then be the 100%. Yes, now, they would pay 100% of the impact fees at only a 50% increase effective 90 days from now. And then whatever date we pick down in the future, it would be then 100%.
So, and Josh, from there, there's your incentive package that comes in for the, for the home builder, for the buyer of that home builder. So if they're in that, if they're in that area.
Your orange, I recognize you.
Well, thank you.
I've been quiet. When we met with the BBIA, Jonathan and I, they were in favor of a sort of a tiered approach, which is similar to what you're mentioning. I like the flexibility of the plans. My worry is there's a cost to maintain a plan. What happens if they stop paying for it? Someone's going to get surprised by it, even though there is a disclosure, someone's going to show up furious with us saying, I can't afford this $1,000 water bill or whatever it might be, $500 water bill, including the impact fees. And so I'm more in favor of the, of a tiered approach over the course of a few years. I think going to your point that we can use the BBIA and their resource and their network and every quarter be sending an email of our incentives. I've already reached out to CPAR. I want to be going to CPAR every quarter, talking about CRA districts and what we have. We should be going to these networks constantly. They are, they're the group that spreads the word on things. And so we should be utilizing them. That's what they're there for.
So I proposed a tiered payment option.
Tiered payment?
Yes. I think what he's proposing is a tiered rollout.
Correct. So tiered payment.
Yes.
Okay, tell me what's tiered about it.
You have two different, you have the new build and then you have the existing older homes.
Oh, I think of actual payments.
And so when you have somebody who, and this is going to start happening a lot more frequently, as people's wells and their subject tanks are having to be re-inspected or fail, if they're near Panama City water, and especially if they're near the coast, they're going, the state will force them to come onto our water system. And when that happens, it is going to be surprise, and they're going to be very upset with us. We've already had one, one gentleman come and he was very upset with us. And I mean, there's not a whole lot we could do about it. But I'm trying to solve for that as well.
Any idea the cost? My hangup is the worry of the cost to run the program and the ongoing payments there from staff. What's the, what's the temperature of a payment plan?
Jan sent me an email. Can you please elaborate?
Yeah, I believe Charlotte sent the, sent the email to you about her interpretation of making installment payments. Our, our system is set up to make installment payments by a systematic, with a systematic approach. So anything that varies outside of that systematic approach is going to, is going to entertain a manual process. You enter manual processes, then you enter human error factors into the, into the game. So that was her main concern, is that anything outside of the installment payment plan would, it would, could upset the balance of, you know, the, the system, the human interaction with the system errors. We'd have to do, you'd have to be relying on a human to do the math instead of the system, you know, all those little, little things that can go wrong.
It's doing it well, but I mean, there are other places that do this, yes.
I like not paying the water bill, but can't shut it off. They haven't paid, if they don't pay, they're still living in their house. The impact, the impact is not, and they've already connected. So my concern there is if they don't pay, what's, what's the consequence? They're not going to kick back your house. That would be my concern about that. Having just gone through a construction project, you're shaking every pillow to get every penny. And it's, it's pretty tough. And so having to know that you've got more money is a concern, but it works because it helps. It helps move it out, not all up front. But we got to remember, the person building the house, the builder, they're the ones that are pulling this permit. It's not the owner. It's not the ultimate, you know, even if, now, an owner can pull their own permit and build a house for themselves one time a year. But in this particular case, it's going to be primarily a builder pulling it for somebody else and paying it. So they're going to pay some and then pay her, or they're going to pay some and be none.
One thing I'll add, and, and, you know, I know Mayor Branch was in the meeting and I know Commissioner Hughes had a conversation, but as well as, again, Ms. Rouse, City Engineer. But I would, I would describe our interaction with BBIA as that they, yes, they would love things to still be this, you know, as much as they were 20 years ago. They understand that it costs more to build a house today than it did 20 years ago. They understand the need of this. They understand the difference between this and the transportation impact fees, you know, because we can still go the route of requiring for larger development, you know, a transportation study, a traffic study, and, and, and put that as part of, you know, the DO or the DA or something like this. So, you know, I don't, I don't want to speak all by myself, but Mayor Branch, I think that's what, what, what they communicated back to us. And they, and they would appreciate anything that we could do.
Yeah.
And that's why I said I was willing to, to suggest the tiered approach.
Yeah, my worry, I was going to buy my first house or second house, and you're so excited, you're like, I'm going to get a rug for this area, and you're going to, you have all these things you're doing, and you're working with your wife or your spouse, and then you get hit with a giant bill and you're like, oh, no new rug. Welcome to Panama City.
Yeah.
Here's a giant bill. And so I'm, I'm in favor, I think the flexibility of the plans is really creative, but I'm in favor of the tiered approach. I'm in favor of this tracking with CPI, as I mentioned before, sewer price index. And that way we don't have these ongoing battles with these large adjustments. In 10 years, the next commission, you know, in 10 years goes, we got to jump the rates up again. And you create these battles every, every 10 years or 20 years.
I think the only thing I would say is that, I mean, and I understand that the, you know, the potential increase in costs and pricing surprise, but, you know, if, if they're not paying it, then the, your existing utility account holders are paying it. So someone's going to pay this. The question is, is it new development in the future, or is it folks in the city right now that are paying a water bill each and every month?
Yeah, I think you hear about our turn, none of us are excited to talk about this at all. We're all like, oh, gosh. I'm in favor of like Robbie's approach, the 25, 50, 100%. I think if we do have people that are coming to us with, they're coming up to the system with existing houses, well issues, and they're coming to us, let's address that one that happens. And potentially we might could address those as they come differently.
So I just want to be, just want to be clear on the dates, Commissioner Hughes. So obviously 25% only, this is for the whole city. We're not splitting them up. At the 90-day mark, February 16th, January 1st of 2026, it'll go to 50%. And then January 1st of 2027 to 100%. Is that, is that the understanding? I just want to make sure that we're talking the same dates.
February 2026, January 2027.
Well, I mean, you're skipping over 2026. Did you mean to skip over? I'm sorry, you're right, 2027. So you're correct, I'm still stuck in 2025. Yeah. So, all right, yes, February 16th, which is 90 days from today.
Right.
It can't be, even if y'all adopted everything, it cannot be before that. That's 90 days. That would be 25% of the, of the increase. And then January 1st of 2027, it would be 50. And then January 1 of 2028, it would be the 100%. Is that your intention?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you, sir. I just wanted to clarify that. And that would be for the entire city of Panama City?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And I'd make a motion to that effect.
We have a motion on the table. Do we need to amend the motion? You read the second.
Oh, we have a motion?
Was you have, you have the second?
Yeah.
That's right, I have the second to.
My motion was to just approve. So what is it that we're trying to do here?
Would you like me to re-step it? I'm happy to restate it. So it's, we're moving forward. We are not trying to differentiate between Panama City North or Panama City proper in order to avoid another study or to split the city between. So this applies to everything in all of the city of Panama City. So on February 16th of 2026, which is 90 days from today, only 25% of the increase will be effective, and that's all they will owe. January 1st of 2027, 50% of the increase will then be effective, and that's all they will owe. And then January 1 of 2028, it will then go to 100%, the number that you have before you now. And that was what will be effective for everyone, with again, no differentiation between Panama City North or Panama City proper.
Yeah, so I, I didn't like the differentiation there, but yeah, I amend my motion to reflect what you've just said.
And I'll second that.
Well, I think from a procedural standpoint, Lucas says the second.
I thought, no, Robbie had the second.
Did you have the second? No, my apologies, my apologies. It's been, it's been a minute.
Okay, so Robbie's in favor then, I'm guessing? Any discussion related to the tiered approach?
I'd like to offer some words to get some of that as far as the ordinance, because I think it'd be appropriate to put it in the ordinance. So the ordinance would read under that approach.
Might I suggest, like we did earlier this year, that we table this issue to city manager? Give you and your team time to square it away, or are you ready to go right now? You loved that idea earlier this year. I just want to remind you of that.
He loves doing it on the fly.
Yeah, okay. I'm just, if you needed a few minutes to work with your team to circle it back, since it's an ordinance change, up to you, sir.
I'm happy to delay, but I still want to read.
All right.
What I've written here. So just real quick. So right now, the water impact fee is $465. It's being increased to $1,350. And subject to my math being corrected, it would read, the water impact fee shall be determined by multiplying the total ERC value for water by $1,350. That's exactly what it reads. Then I would add, the increase will be phased in as follows. $686 water impact fee commencing February 16th, 2026. $907 water impact fee on January 1, 2027. And then $1,350 water impact fee on January 1, 2028. On the sewer impact, wastewater impact fee, the language is, as written, the water impact fee shall be determined by multiplying the total ERC value for wastewater by $1,250. That's been stricken, it's now $1,610. And so the new language is the increase will be phased in as follows. It would be $1,340 sewer wastewater impact fee as of February 16th, 2026. $1,430 wastewater impact fee commencing January 1, 2027. And then $1,610 wastewater impact fee commencing March 1, 2029. Happy to have it table, and we can bring it back so you can actually read it rather than just hearing me verbalize it, whatever you'd like to do.
I mean, if we're good, I'm not trying to delay. I just.
Forward, we got a first and a second, any discussion? Call roll.
Commissioner Granger.
Yes.
Commissioner Street.
Yes.
Commissioner Hughes.
Yes.
Commissioner Lucas.
Yes.
Mayor Branch.
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0. And I will work on a policy for impact, impact fee tiered approach for people impacted by mandation, mandated hookups to the water and sewer.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I'd like to read the title. Ordinance number 3274 and ordinance amending ordinance 1914 and ordinance 2617 revising chapter 23 utilities of the municipal code, amending division 2 rates and charges of Article 2 water, amending division 3 rates and charges of Article 3 sewers and sewage disposal, providing for increased connection fees for water and wastewater, providing that this ordinance shall be codified, providing that all ordinances in conflict be repealed and providing for an effective date.
Item 6B was removed. Item 6C is the second and final of two public hearings on ordinance 3285 and ordinance amending chapter 102 administrative processes, Article 2 development review procedure, section 102-37, final site inspection and acceptance, chapter 110 supplemental standards, section 110-1 determination of density, chapter 111 subdivision of land, chapter 116 definitions of the unified land development code. Relevant background information is enclosed in your packet, same reading as the last and first reading. Staff recommendations to the Director of Development Services that the city commission conduct the second and final public hearing and approve the ordinance. Mr. Mayor?
This is the public hearing. If you wish to speak about item 6C, please come to the podium.
Sarah Thomas, 1100 West 10th Street. I think the, the, the final site preparation where you, you dig a hole and put water in it for two weeks or something, that shouldn't be the only thing that you're using for that. You should look at how the, the land has been used over time, whether it's the wet season or the dry season might have an effect on that. And when you're increasing the density, you're getting rid of all the trees in the residential neighborhood. So I don't like that.
Thank you. Anyone else on item 6C? Seeing none, closing public comments, under chain of motion.
No motion for discussion.
Do I have a second? No second discussion.
I, I had sent staff providing an appeals process to this, to this state mandate. One of the things that I've experienced is anytime that we get blanket ability to the team, like we need to have a process in which our citizens can come if they disagree with the decision. And so this is, this one would leave no, no other recourse other than just accept the way that it is. And, you know, hey, you got a 800-unit development next door to your property, guess what? You know, staff made the decision, there's no formal appeals process to. We still may not be able to change that decision. It may be something we're legally required to do. But the language that I provided the team was, please provide this appeals process. Any person aggrieved by the decision of an administrative authority may appeal to the city commission within 30 days of the decision. The commission shall review, shall be, the commission review should be limited to whether or not the plat or replat complies with this specific statute that's listed here in this report and applicable city regulations. So that was really the component. I would, I also just like to see what plats are getting approved as well. I like to see like a monthly update process, something, because these are big decisions. These are not like, this is not like a little tiny thing that's happening. I mean, this is like, this is like Panama City North kind of decisions. So I mean, I, I want to be informed of what's going on, and I want there to be a process that our citizens can come and at least air their concern if needed.
I like that. Why aren't we changing what things are called? The planning board is now going to be a committee. We're going to be, everybody knows it's the planning board, everybody knows we're, we're the commission. Why are we going backwards and getting back with people? We're giving it from five days to seven days. You mind if I ask about them? Michael, David?
Yeah.
Come on down.
I just, it, it, we might confuse people as long as I'm asking.
Michael Fuller, Director of Development Services. So the TRC is a, the staff, made up of city staff, people. And it's not replacing the planning board. Planning board's still going to be the planning board.
The name.
Yeah.
You're, you're calling it committee instead of planning board.
That's because the current method is to take a preliminary plat to the planning board. This would change it to that it's a staff level determination.
Okay. So the staff is the PRC.
That never goes to the planning board.
Never goes to the planning, never comes to us.
Yeah.
And that's a statute now, right?
That is a statute, that is Senate Bill 784.
I mean, we haven't followed it? Well, until you caught.
The thing, what it does is.
You're born, Josh.
It requires us to put, to put the authority into somebody else's hands, right? But I think what you're getting at is, in doing so, we want that person, whether it's Jonathan or what have you, to come back to us and say, hey, this is what's in front of me, what do y'all think about it? Right? That's.
Yeah, I mean, that's a good process, and just a process that our citizens, like, if they feel aggrieved by a decision, they can come and petition us. We have had previous accounts where there is not in our land development code or regulations that allows for that, and this is an opportunity for us to kind of create that built into this. Yes, we're required to do this, and there's nothing we can do to stop this from happening, but we can add further rules on ourselves that require additional steps.
Yes.
That's all I'm.
Because they didn't spell out exactly how it has to happen, they just want us to change who can sign the plat over to somebody else, whether it's Jonathan, whether it's Michael, or what have you, right?
So, Michael, today, you're going to bring a preliminary plat to the planning board, they're going to look at it, approve it, vote on it, bring it us, we approve it, sign it.
That's correct.
Now, you're going to have it, and who is the, who is the TRC? You say staff, who is that?
It's made up of city engineer, planning, fire department, utilities. It's the people that review site plans and plats.
Okay. And everybody.
And that's not new, that's not new, they already exist.
Right, but those are the only people that are going to be looking at it with him, and y'all make that decision and then you sign it, or you didn't give it to him, Jonathan he signs it.
Yes, the statute says that now it has to be an administrative official that signs off on it, and in this case, it'd be the city manager.
A lot of bonus on hiring the right city manager.
And creating this process allows us to keep a prize, not that I think Jonathan wants to go and do something that's against the board, but we don't, I mean, never forbid Jonathan's not in that position, you know, 10 years from now, five years from now, whatever it is, 100 years from now, Jonathan, if you choose to live that long. But I would feel better with the appeals process defined, as well as a reporting process that allows us to at least have view of what's actually, you know, being approved, so.
What I would request is, I would do two separate votes, I would direct staff to bring back, it sounds like an amendment to the ordinance, to specifically, at the commission's direction, spell out the appeals process.
Do that.
And then second, move forward with this, but we'll move forward as quick as possible. When do you think you could have that provision back?
We should be able to have it back the next December meeting.
Okay, it doesn't have to go through the planning board? It might have to be the January meeting.
Yeah, I'll defer to our city attorney.
There is, that is an excellent approach. Another approach would be to provide instruction to include the appeal process, and then just have, and then have another final hearing in December, and then adopt the ordinance with the appeal process.
I like that.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve this.
So we have, we have the motion on the floor?
Motion retracted for discussion.
Retract, okay.
Motion for approval of this ordinance with the addition of an appeals process to be brought back forth in.
I thought we were deferring.
Or deferred.
Yeah, technically, you're not approving the ordinance, you're signaling, you'll approve it if there's an appeal process that you like, but we're actually deferring this hearing till the next meeting and bring back the appeal process.
Motion to defer till our next meeting with an appeals process brought forth back with this ordinance.
Do I have a second? No second there. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Commissioner Granger?
Yes.
Commissioner Street?
Yes.
Commissioner Hughes?
Yes.
Commissioner Lucas?
Yes.
Mayor Branch?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
I'll read the title again, and I know I read it the first time, but it has not been adopted, but this will just be another reading of the title. "In ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Panama City, Florida, amending Chapter 102 Administrative Processes, Article 2 Development Review Procedures, Section 102-37, Final Site Inspection Acceptance, Chapter 110 Supplemental Standards Acceptance, Determination of Density, Chapter 111 Subdivision of Land, Chapter 116 Definitions of Unified Land Development Code relating to the subdivision combining and planting of land, providing for modifications, repealing clause severability codification and correction of scriveners' errors, and providing an effective date."
Item 6D is the second and final of two public hearings on Ordinance 3288 and Ordinance Amending Chapter 106 Environmental Protection, Section 106-12, Developer Stormwater and Erosion Control Plan in Chapter 109, Infrastructure and Public Improvements, Section 109-43, Infrastructure and Public Improvements of the Unified Land Development Code. Relevant background information is enclosed in your packet, as this is the second and final reading. Staff recommendation through the Director of Development Services recommends the City Commission conduct the second and final public hearing and approve the ordinance. I'll just point out that City Engineer Stacy Rouse is here, if there's any additional questions, and the question was asked, and just to be reminded by one of the elected officials, that yes, this would align our policy and our ULDC with, very similar to what the county in Panama City Beach has. Mr. Mayor?
Yes, if you'd like to speak about Item 6D, please come to the podium. Yes, sir.
Derek Thomas, 1100 West 10th Street. Currently, the city doesn't have a plan to address the drainage issues in neighborhoods. If an individual property owner can come in and flood the neighborhood and change the drainage for the entire neighborhood, that's a problem, and I don't see anything in this amendment that's going to fix that. When you come in and build a retention pond in somebody's backyard and block the flow of water to the drain, that has an effect on everybody in the neighborhood. If you don't have to file permits, if you're connected with the right families, or you can go to the EPA and say, hey, this was declared a wetland, but now I want it changed to a marshland, and I want to go in there and fill it in, you wouldn't have been allowed to do that if it was a protected wetland, but if you can just change that, then that's not working. If you plan as a city is to allow people to flood other people's property, I don't think that that's respectful to the people that live here, and I would like to see something done to prevent that in the future. If you can't do it through code enforcement, because some people, the code enforcement, you file a complaint, and it's not even recorded with them, if you file it in writing, and it's up to the code enforcement office who they enforce the codes on, I think that if you did put in place a code enforcement ordinance that says it's a violation to flood other people's property, that might have an effect on it. I know it's a violation of civil law to do that, but then you have to go to court, spend years, spend tens of thousands of dollars fighting it. I don't think that that's appropriate to put that on the back of somebody living on a fixed income, a retiree living in an older home. I don't think that those people should be forced out of their homes in order to change the neighborhood into high density, or whatever you want to change it into. I think you should protect R1 neighborhoods, you should protect the people's houses that are currently there, and you should stop people from destroying other people's property. And I don't see how you're going to manage to do that with the changes you're making in this ordinance, but I think that you should do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on Item 6D? Seeing none, closing public comments, I'll entertain a motion.
Okay, sir, go ahead.
Yes, sir.
Well, 200614 Main Avenue. I just wanted, does it have anything to do with the letters that we, that were sent out to the citizens of Panama City about their water pipes?
Yes, sir.
But, I'll see you next meeting, when we go talk about it.
I got a letter too, yes, sir. Anyone else on Item 6D? Closing public comments, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I'll just add, it's already illegal to make modifications to your property to create adverse off-site impacts to other people's property, so we don't need to add that to this, so.
Please, please let us do that. Thank you.
Does this get rid of, or does this have enforced the one-year requirement for?
Yeah, for the geotech.
For the geotech?
Yeah, I think it needs to be out more.
Okay, I'm getting a head nod, yes, so.
Can, I have a question along that same piece.
And the requirements on the backside of the road, rather than just built to city standards.
Could we ask Stacy a question?
Mr. Mayor, can Ms. Rouse?
Sounds like we've, it sounds like we've got engineers talking to us.
Yes, we do.
So, I have the same thing happen over the weekend. So, Stacy, I'm going to try to break this down into a way that.
I'm sorry, we just named and titled for the public thing.
Stacy Rouse, City Engineer.
So I'm not going to pretend that I understand exactly what I'm going to ask you, but what I do understand is, there is a way that the county calculates for free board, and there's a way that the city is calculating for free board, and it is possible that when they start road construction, that the water table could be different than when they finish road construction. Is that correct? And so it could lead to fully compliant on the front side, but not compliant on the backside. Is that, is that correct in my understanding? And I'm asking the question as elementary as I can, because I don't fully understand even what the question I was being asked.
Yes, that's a free board and the seasonal high water table for the road are two separate things. Free board is the elevation in, of the water in your pond, when it gets to essentially its max modeled amount, and then the top of the berm.
Okay.
So.
So maybe I'm asking the road questions.
But I think I know what you're saying is, so essentially is, if you have an undeveloped property, you know, a completely green site, trees and everything, you go out there and you do a geotech on it, and, you know, they'll tell you where the seasonal high water table is at that time. But whenever you get rid of all of the trees, you add a bunch of homes, you start putting ponds, the water table can shift. Part of engineering design is a factor of safety, and whenever you're going to take a green site and completely develop it, you're obviously going to use a higher factor of safety than you would if you're, you know, adding, you know, a minimal amount of impervious surface. So, in that, we're relying on the engineers to use good judgment to know, you know, well, I'm going to be putting a pond right next to this road, the water table's going to be higher in this area, I need to account for that. And we're not really seeing that happening, and that's one of the reasons why this ordinance came about.
And is that the difference between the county and the city's ordinance?
I don't know of anything in the county's ordinance that is any different than that. I know that the county calculates the distance from the bottom of the subgrade, and we're calculating from the bottom of the base, so I think the county says two foot from the bottom of the subgrade, and the subgrade's 12 inches, so where ours says three foot from the bottom of the base, it's actually the same number, it's just different.
Okay.
A different verb.
That sounds like the question I'm asking, and I think that's where there's some confusion, so I don't know how like that, that is clear.
And we're not saying that you absolutely cannot do it, and I think I'd had this conversation with a couple of you guys about, we're not saying it's an absolute no, rejected, you have no chance of building, it's a, it needs to go through the proper channels, and I think it needs to come before you guys, because in reality, when you do raise that water table below a road, you are impacting the life of that road, so it's an ongoing financial responsibility that the city is taking on, and I think that you guys need to know when that's happening, because a few of you have those roads in your wards, and you know how difficult that can be for the citizens. So, I just think that it needs to be brought to you guys, because I don't think that's a decision we should, we should really be making when it's a financial, long-term decision.
Okay, so it is possible that it could be different, but it's going to have to go through us.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, all right, thank you. I think I answered my question.
Free board's my favorite one in the street song.
Start singing.
So, on the roads done, and I remember you saying the other night, you really have it to our standard, what is our standard? But afterwards, now you're requiring four items to be completed, I guess, before a CO can be issued, or whatever they issue for a road. What type of expense is that increasing, and what kind of timeframe do you think that's going to put in the?
So currently, we do it.
Oh, you do it?
Yeah. So currently, that kind, no, like, right now, we do that. We're asking the contractor to do that, to prove to us, so at this point, we say, you need to build it to our standards for us to accept it. And then they say, okay, here's the road, take it from me, and, you know, we don't have anything to say, okay, prove to me that it meets our standards. So we go out and we look at it, and we say, by looking at all these samples, that it meets our standards. But I think that's also a financial burden that we shouldn't be taking on. I think that's a financial burden of the person who is asking us to take this road.
Is that asked upon contractors in other areas?
I'm not sure if, well, so a lot of this stuff is stuff that they're already doing in building it, so the asphalt cores, they're already doing that throughout their projects, so we're just asking for that data, because they don't provide that info to us. And then the only thing that I think is kind of maybe unusual, or different, or new, would be the post-construction groundwater monitoring, because you can't really do a geotech right after construction and just say, yep, this is, this is it, because it's a brand-new construction, so you want to monitor it over time. So we've done that in projects, we've monitored it over time, seen where the water table sits, and you can make an accurate assumption based on that. So, we're asking them to come back and do that same thing, to tell us, is this road operating the way your engineer designed it to operate?
If it doesn't, what happens?
So there are options, there's different mechanisms we could do, we've, there's also potential, maybe if we're compensating for that road, maybe there's a discussion there. But in reality, what I'm hoping that happens is, when they know that they have to prove it to us, they don't, you know, shave it that close. They use that factor of safety and don't put that, don't just like cross their fingers and hope that it passes, because we don't, we don't want something in the city that is, that barely passed.
So, I'm going to build your road, you want me to come back afterwards, put something in and monitor it, come on down the line, let's say two years down the road, it's not meeting your standard, and you're going to come tell me, and I got to pay for it?
Not, no, this would be immediately when you asked me to accept it. You would provide me all this data, say, hey, I'm ready, it's the same.
But you said after the fact, you're monitoring the water?
Yeah, right after it's built, so whenever they built it, whenever it's completed, they would monitor it, tell me what the water table is, and they would come back and say, hey, we have all this data, this is what we said it is. It's exactly what they do essentially for a pond. When they submit us the as-built, so when you survey your pond, you know, you know whether or not your water, because the water table where it's sitting is one of your design parameters, so we can tell whether or not it's operating the way it's supposed to be. So that kind of stuff is done for ponds, it's done, you know, for water and sewer, they have to air pressure test, they have to do flushing for the utility lines, there's all this testing that we require on all this other expensive infrastructure, but not our roads, the stuff that people see every day and drive on every day.
Yeah, this keeps us from taking a liability. That's true.
Yeah.
But time and cost, I mean, you're doing it now, so what's the kind of timeframe it's on the city right now to do these things?
So some, some of the testing's already happening, so it's not going to be any additional, and it happens as they build the road, so that's really the only.
Built into their cost already.
Yeah, the only additional expense would probably be the monitoring wells, depending on the length of the road. Like I said, we bought monitoring wells, they're reusable, so Matt and I have installed them in quite a few places, and, you know, it's, we take about two weeks to look it over, and I can tell you right now, like, that really wouldn't impact most developers, because they build that road, and they're not asking me for acceptance of the road immediately. There's roads in some of the neighborhoods here that people are actually already living on those roads, and they have not asked us to accept the roads yet. So, I mean, it's not like people are rushing.
Which means it's still a private road.
That's right.
Well, so it's platted to us, but we have not officially accepted it, so if there's a failure of that road before we accept it, it's on them.
Yeah.
Yeah. Which we do a full visual inspection, but at this point, all we have is a visual inspection, which is not really going to tell us a whole lot about what's going on underneath.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Any other discussion? Please call the roll.
Commissioner Granger?
Yes.
Commissioner Street?
Yes.
Commissioner Hughes?
Yes.
Commissioner Lucas?
Yes.
Mayor Branch?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Nope.
6E.
Oh, she's got to read it.
This is ordinance 3288.
6 Delta.
Yes.
Yep, 3288.
"In ordinance of the City Commission of Panama City, Florida, amending Sections 106-12 and 109-43 of the Unified Land Development Code concerning Developer's Stormwater and Erosion Control Plan and Design Standards, repealing all ordinances in conflict therewith, providing for severability, codification, and providing an effective date."
Item 6C is the second and final of two public hearings on Ordinance 3289, an ordinance amending Section 104-2 Mixed Use MU2 of the ULDC. Relevant background information enclosed in your packet, as this is the second reading. Staff recommendation through the Director of Development Services is that the City Commission conduct the second and final public hearing and approve the ordinance. Mr. Mayor?
Yes, this is a public hearing, if you wish to speak about Item 6E, please come forward. Anyone on 6E? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Commissioner Granger?
Yes.
Commissioner Street?
Yes.
Commissioner Hughes?
Yes.
Commissioner Lucas?
Yes.
Mayor Branch?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Commission has adopted ordinance 3289, and ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Panama City, Florida, amending the city's Unified Land Development Code, revising Chapters 104 Zoning Districts, amending the bulk regulations of Mixed Use 2 zoning district as provided in Section 104-31, repealing all ordinances in conflict therewith, providing for severability, providing for codification, and providing for an effective date. and providing for an effective date.
Item six F is the first of two public hearings on ordinance thirty-two ninety-four, an ordinance amending section one oh two dash forty, conditional use permits or CUPs and section one oh four dash sixty-six gateway overlay of the Unified Land Development Code. As background information, ordinance thirty-two ninety-four, as proposed for the commission's consideration, will amend section one oh two dash forty, conditional use permits and section one oh four dash sixty-six gateway overlay of the ULDC by allowing for certain conditional uses in the gateway overlay district. The proposed amendment will add vape shops and stores to the list of prohibited uses in the gateway overlay and will allow for several, several currently prohibited uses such as bail bonds, pawn shops, bottle clubs, et cetera, to be allowed in the gateway overlay. This amendment provides for specific standards for conditional uses. This item was previously reviewed by the planning board on November tenth of twenty And I assume was recommended for approval?
Yes.
Yep, okay. With staff concurrence, the following documents are enclosed, staff analysis report and recommendation, ordinance number thirty-two ninety-four, staff recommendation through the Director Development Services that the city commission conduct the first public hearing. Mr. Mayor?
Yes, if you wish to speak about item six F, please come to the podium. Anyone on six F? Closing public comments.
I would like to see storage facilities added to this list of the, um-
To potentially get us up?
Uh, the list for the bail bonds, pawn shops, bottle clubs, I, I would, if we're going to allow those things, then I would, I would like to see us allow storage units as well.
Okay.
I would like to absolutely oppose that. This, like-
All of it?
Like, I, I mean, I, I think, I think some of it is like, like, okay, um, I get it. We've got a ton of vape shops, um, fine. I mean, like that's that piece, but a lot of these have been, I'm just going to tell you guys, they've been helpful in creating more positive momentum in our corridors. And I, I'm getting very nervous, like a self-storage unit, there is no auxiliary benefit to the community that's at. It's just a, a land grab and it doesn't ever go away. There's no benefit other than just a building that just sits there, um, doing nothing except storing our junk. And, you know, it's not bringing any like community true value to it. And these gateway overlays are part of, of revitalizing the districts that, that at least I feel like they're a helpful tool in, in how we address, you know, blight and, um, and increase economic activity, not decrease it. So that's, that's where I'm at. So I, I'm not, I mean, I don't know where all this is coming from, from all, like all these different uses and things like that, but I'm like, I'm like, I'm looking more like a surgical knife, not like a giant hatchet to the gateway overlay. That's where I'm at.
Well, as I understand it, this would still, uh, these conditional uses still have to come before us for, um, review. They're not automatic. They're not added to the gateway automatic.
Correct. They were, there's a process. Yeah. Yeah, they go to the planning board.
So can we make them come to us?
They need to come to us.
I think they'd have to.
Yeah, you, you are the bosses, so yeah.
If they're going to the planning board, they need to come to us.
They're going to the planning board, but they don't come to us currently, the way this is written.
This overlay is so big that they need to come to the commission.
I, I will tell you this, and I think, I think, um, the mayor said it best one or two meetings ago, everything is a good idea and a bad idea at the same time. So like, like, I, like, there are a lot of places, like, like, I mean, like, I think of Steelboys, Bales Bonds, like, I, I mean, I think they're a great community partner. They've got an auxiliary use that's alongside that. Awesome. Great. Um, I think about Dan's Pawn Shop and, um, and Avery. Great. But I also think about things that I've seen happen on the beach and I've seen happen in other areas where it's not a great experience for the community that's surrounding. And so I think it's very important if we're going to use, like, these things, I'm, I'm all for, like, what you're saying now, whereas it's like, hey, we can still be surgical in our approach and how these things happen versus, you know, this hatchet, yes, hatchet, no. But I, I would be, I would be very apprehensive to just start slashing these uses and then leave it in the hands of just the planning board or some other, uh, some other scenario.
So, so the reason I say storage is because I've had a couple of folks who have approached me various times in the past about, uh, storage in Ward Three, not actually on the road, but it's just close enough.
Well, that's under the four hundred feet, which I want to estimate, why four hundred feet off the road?
So for me, a lot of this is just, it's not about the business, it's about the appearance. And so if there was a liner building, you know, if you could have self-storage, if there was a liner building of some other use, uh, that sort of protected the corridor visually.
Well, the facade.
Yeah, and it was a whole other business, you know, if you're going to put something out. So to me, it's, it's not about yucky businesses being near us, it's, it's a visual appearance being of the road.
Aesthetic.
And some of that is outlined in here, you know, the, the conditional use would have to have a smaller sign attached to the building, no clustering of the same use of buildings over and over, you know, the same businesses over and over again. Um, and so, yeah, this makes me nervous, uh, and it's hard telling someone like, no, we don't want your business. Um, but to me, you can still accomplish the goal of this by having a, maybe playing with the footage off the road and saying, you can have an entrance to this business, but you can't have visual road frontage usage or something like that, or something, some word of word that, planning wise, I don't really know.
What if we included the architecture review board in looking at these items? I mean, that's how some communities do it, where when we're talking more taste elements, um, they get sent to the architecture review board, they, they kind of weigh in as far as like, yeah, this works, but you, this is how it needs to, needs to look. Storage unit's a great example. I had one person ask me about it and I think we've worked through some, some issues before is like, if the bottom's retail, I mean, what's vertical doesn't really affect anything, you know, from that standpoint. So I think that there's probably a lot of ways to yes in certain instances, but I, I'm very hesitant to just remove. And then all of a sudden, the next corporation, I mean, guys, this is what happens with gas stations, what's happened all across our city, is like, this is a good example of you get a hedge fund behind a certain, certain thing and then all of a sudden you know, which, before you know it, that's all you have in your entire city. And, um, so, you know.
So it sounds like they need to do some massaging of this before they bring it back to us.
Yeah, and when you're, when you're talking about what it looks like, let's say there's a brand-new bill on the eight hundred block of Harrison Avenue right now, there's two spots they're going to rent, they've already rented one. Under this, it looks, the facade looks straight, it's a brand-new building. But allowing, you know, now you're going to have, um, whatever's allowed to go in there on a, on a, um, it has to be conditional use, so we have to okay it. But the architectural review board, what, what purpose would they have there? And I get why you're asking that because you're going to have an old dilapidated building and you want to come in, maybe they have a say-so with what it looks like from the outside.
Well, some cities will acquire, um, gosh, I've seen like, you're talking about climate controlled storage, multi-story, they'll even put fake windows on it to make it look like it's not climate-controlled storage and disguise parking garages and things like that and kind of push, push the aesthetic element a little bit more. Um, that's why I'm in favor of, of seeing this.
I think all that could be borne out of the conditional use request. So, because each one of these individual types of businesses on top of every single location, it's going to be a little bit different. And so I think that, that probably one of the best ways for it is to have a condition, if somebody wants a conditional use, um, variation, I don't know what we want to call that, um, uh, for this gateway overlay, that they, they put it forward to staff and then, um, it goes to the planning board, then it comes to us, we can refer it to the architectural review board, have them do a report, and then come back to us a second time.
That can take ninety days.
I, I, hey, but it's a conditional use, right?
It's the time.
Okay, but it's a conditional use on a gateway overlay.
Well, that's true.
And every time you do it, you, you set a precedent every time you do it, right? So it shouldn't be something that we do very fast.
That's true.
So, but yeah, I, I agree, Commissioner Street, I, I don't like, I don't like changing this, but, um, you know, we have, we have, uh, I think we do need a lever here that is allows for some kind of flexibility.
So, so let me make sure I understand. So all the ones that we're removing from, from, uh, from prohibited uses are all following under the conditional use? So there's nothing that's automatically granted?
Right.
Out of anything that we're removing?
That is correct.
Except vape shops in your ward, they're automatically.
It sounds like you're saying vape shops, which is funny.
You should take away a vape shop.
Especially, uh-
One day you'll understand.
So, um, you know, and yeah, and I mean, I even think from, from, just from the vape shop owner's perspective, I mean, I've had several have reached out to me and said, hey, we're getting oversaturated in the market, like, is there a way that we can be distances between? So this is a way of addressing that. So I don't even think there's going to be resistance to that. But I do think that if we can kind of identify how we can get to the commission for the final approval and, um, and I like Brian's idea, maybe there's some referral process to the architectural review board or something like that, but it sounds like we need a little bit more work, maybe one more meeting?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so I'll motion to, to table this until, uh, next meeting and staff has an opportunity to take the feedback and, um, shape the final.
Would you like to have another first reading at the next meeting? And then if, if-
Yes.
If you think on your, uh, then it could come for adoption in January.
The, the only concern I have, Mr. Zimmerman, um, that pushes it well into the new year and I know that we currently have, um, an agreement that we've been authorized to negotiate and sell of a property on MLK Boulevard in Ward Two. Do you have any concern with the timeline that we are now proposing today to prevent the sale of that property as we're currently negotiating?
We're selling?
We are. The old, uh, yeah, nine twenty MLK Boulevard, the old police substation.
Okay. There, there is-
You mean what?
There's a long due diligence period. Uh, the buyer desires to relocate a bail bondsman, uh, business to the site and, um, should actually be moving hers, I believe, if I understand it correctly. Um, I, I don't, I can't remember if it, and I bet Ms. McSwain will tell us here in just a minute, but I believe it was ninety days, maybe a hundred and twenty days due diligence. So it's possible-
From when?
Uh, that January would work, but, uh, we'll find out here momentarily.
And the, uh, one of the unique factors here is that this Bales Bonds is currently operating like two hundred feet, three hundred feet from where she wants to move from. So it's not an additional, uh, Bales Bonds, it's just that the, uh, the place she's chosen is on the gateway.
You happen to see that? Ms. McSwain?
Yep.
Okay. The, the, what the pause is, is to determine if we could have the first reading today and then see where we are in, in December. That was the path we were on. Um, if, if we don't have the first reading today and delay it until December, which is fine, it may or may not, Ms. Blue Brown would, may need to ask for an extension of time, that's all. Or it might not meet her plans.
Are we the seller?
Yes.
I'm looking for a grand extension of time.
I believe we would.
Hopefully would.
If that solves the issue.
Yes, sir.
I just haven't.
Yes, sir.
The additional, um, concern is that the buyer has a timeline before she has to start a new lease and that's the first of the year. And, um, she initially, uh, requested last July, like twenty twenty-four, and it took us, uh, almost a year to get to this point. And we've approved a contract, so we're putting this buyer in a precarious position.
But did we approve it subject to this, this change in?
No.
This being updated?
No. But that was, that, um, we knew, we are going through the process and that drove the length of time for the due diligence. Apparently we're not going to find out exactly what, what that time period is.
Ouch.
How about, oh, February, due diligence?
Did you say February or January?
So if this were adopted, the first meeting in January, it would still be within the due diligence time period?
In February.
Needs a little background music.
A hundred and twenty days of that background music.
I believe it would still be in the due diligence period if we were to have another first reading in December and with adoption, the first meeting in January. It's within a hundred and twenty days.
Okay. Because I feel like there's going to be enough in this, that's changed, that it's not going to be, it would be too much to stay on the first reading.
Yep.
Potentially.
Yes. We're good. If it's a hundred and twenty, I thought it was ninety days, which would give me concern. If it's one twenty, we're, I concur, we're good.
So we have a first and a second, correct?
On table.
To table.
Uh, we have, we have a motion to table. I don't think we got a second.
Do I need a change?
We need a change?
No.
Any discussion?
Just declare, so we'll bring it back December sixteenth for the revised first reading and then the first meeting in January would be the second reading.
Okay. Please call. I'm assuming it's correct in sixty.
We'll get it right, sir, I promise.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Granger?
Yes.
Commissioner Street?
Yes.
Commissioner Hughes?
Yes.
Commissioner Lucas?
Yes.
Mayor Branch?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Item six G is consideration to conduct a first reading and public hearing on ordinance thirty-two ninety-seven that adopts the Panama City Community Redevelopment Agency Plan Amendments and Comprehensive Updates. Relevant background information is enclosed in your packet. Staff recommendation through the city manager's office is that the commission conduct a first reading and public hearing on ordinance thirty-two ninety-seven that adopts the Panama City Community Redevelopment Plan Amendments and Comprehensive Updates. Mr. Mayor?
This is a public hearing. If you wish to speak about item six G, please come to the podium.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Anyone on six G? Closing, closing public comments.
Will there be any testimony?
No, no, read the, uh, first reading for six, uh, G.
Thank you. Ordinance number thirty-two ninety-seven, first reading, an ordinance of the city of Panama City, Florida, adopting the amended and updated Panama City Community Redevelopment Plan, providing for expansion of boundaries of redevelopment areas, providing for community redevelopment plan amendments, providing for extension of the termination date, providing for severability, providing for codification, and providing for an effective date.
Mr. Mayor, commissioners, moving into quasi-judicial hearings. As a reminder, during quasi-judicial proceedings, the commission will hear evidence and render a decision regarding the matter presented based upon the evidence received. The parties before the commission and the public are entitled to present evidence, documents, witnesses, et cetera, and cross-examine any witnesses. All parties and witnesses will be under oath in the entire proceeding is recorded. The commission is not bound by the strict rules of evidence and make consider any evidence which it deems relevant and trustworthy. Any member of the commission may ask questions of the parties or the witnesses. Since quasi-judicial proceedings are legal in nature, everyone is expected to adhere to proper courtroom decorum and etiquette. Any comments or objections should be directed to the mayor. The burden of proof in a quasi-judicial proceeding rests with the applicant. The burden of proof in a quasi judicial proceeding rests with the applicant. Therefore, the applicant has the opportunity to address the commission last after all public participation and before the commission deliberates.
Okay, for this, at this time, for items 7A, B, C, D, and E, F, and G, I would like to swear in staff who will remain under oath during the entire proceedings. And also, if you intend to speak, if you would stand also and be sworn at this time, if for some reason later on you want to speak even though you didn't stand to be sworn, that is perfectly fine. You come on up and we could swear you at that time. So staff and anybody else that intends to speak, if you could stand... There we go. Okay, please stand and raise your right hand. Do you swear and affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you. I'll ask the commission to disclose any ex parte communications before the vote is taken, which is communications that's received outside of this public hearing that you intend to rely on in making your decision. This is information that hasn't been repeated in the staff report or been repeated in any of the oral comments. And you... And what is disclosed is not the substance, but just the fact that the ex parte communications happened.
Item 7A is the first of two public hearings on ordinance 3291.1, an ordinance admitting the future land use map of the city to reflect the land use designation of mixed use for a property located at 1817 Beck Avenue with parcel ID 28885-00000. Relevant background information is enclosed in your packet. Staff recommendations of the Director of Development Services is that the city commission conduct the first public hearing. Mr. Mayor?
Yes, if you want to speak about item 7A, please come forward. Anyone on 7A? Seeing none, closing public comments.
First reading?
First reading.
First reading, ordinance 3291.1, an ordinance admitting the comprehensive plan future land use map of the city to reflect a land use designation of mixed use for a parcel of land located at 1817 Beck Avenue, Panama City, Florida, providing for repealer, severability, and effective date.
Item 7B is the first of two public hearings on ordinance 3291.2, an ordinance admitting the zoning map of the city to reflect a zoning designation of mixed use 3, MU3, for a property located at 1817 Beck Avenue, parcel ID 28885-0000. This is the same address as the prior ordinance. Relevant background information is enclosed in your packet. Staff recommendation to the Director of Development Services is that the city commission conduct the first public hearing. Mr. Mayor?
Yes, if you wish to speak about item 7B, please come forward. Anyone on 7B? Seeing none, closing public comments.
Commission's first reading of ordinance 3291.2, an ordinance zoning a parcel of land located at 1817 Beck Avenue, Panama City, Florida, having approximately .045 acres, mixed use 3, providing for severability and effective date.
Item 7C is the first of two public hearings on ordinance 3293.1, an ordinance on the voluntary annexation of approximately .516 acres of property located at 3719 Shoreline Circle with parcel ID 26927-0000. Relevant background information is enclosed in your packet. Staff recommendation through the Director of Development Services is that the city commission conduct the first public hearing. Mr. Mayor?
If you wish to speak about item 7C, please come forward. Anyone on 7C? Seeing none, closing public comments.
First reading, ordinance 32...
I talked to their builder.
Oh.
And he's willing to disclose that I've done that a couple times.
Okay. Thank you, commissioners. Ordinance number 3293.1, an ordinance of the city approving the voluntary annexation of .516 acres of unincorporated property located at 3719 Shoreline Circle into the city as further defined, amending the wards and boundaries to include said land and providing for an effective date.
Item 7D is the first of two public hearings on ordinance 3293.2, an ordinance admitting the future land use map of the city to reflect the land use designation of residential for a property located at 3719 Shoreline Circle, parcel ID 26927-0000. This is the same address as the prior item. Relevant background information is enclosed in your packet. Staff recommendation through the Director of Development Services is that the commission conduct the first public hearing. Mr. Mayor?
If you wish to speak about item 7D, please come forward. Anyone on 7D? Seeing none, closing public comments.
First reading, ordinance 3293.2, an ordinance admitting comprehensive plan future land use map of the city to reflect a land use designation of residential for a parcel of property located at 3719 Shoreline Circle, Panama City, providing for repealer, providing for severability, and effective date.
Item 7E is the first of two public hearings on ordinance 3293.3, an ordinance admitting the zoning map of the city to reflect a zoning designation of residential 1, R-1, for a property located at 3719 Shoreline Circle, parcel ID 26927-0000. This is the same address as the prior item. Relevant background information is enclosed in your packet. Staff recommendation through the Director of Development Services is that the city commission conduct the first public hearing. Mr. Mayor?
If you wish to speak about item 7E, please come forward. Anyone on 7E? Closing public comments.
First reading, ordinance 3293.3, an ordinance zoning a parcel of property located at 3719 Shoreline Circle, Panama City, Florida, having approximately .516 acres, R1, providing for severability and providing for an effective date.
Item 7F is the first of two public hearings on ordinance 3295.1, an ordinance admitting the future land use map of the city to reflect the land use designation of recreation for a property located at 1310 Lincoln Drive with parcel ID 17494-0000. Relevant information is enclosed in your packet. This is an item that is requested by city staff from Development Services Department, Parks, Culture and Recreation Department, as well as the city manager's office. Staff recommendation through the Director of Development Services is that the city commission conduct the first public hearing. Mr. Mayor?
If you'd like to speak about item 7F, please come forward. Anyone on 7F? Seeing none, closing public comments.
First reading, ordinance 3295.1, an ordinance admitting the comprehensive plan future land use map of the city to reflect a land use designation of recreation for a parcel of land located at 1310 Lincoln Drive, Panama City, Florida, providing for repealer, severability, and effective date.
Item 7G is the first of two public hearings on ordinance 3295.2, an ordinance admitting the zoning map of the city to reflect a zoning designation of recreation, REC, for a property located at 1310 Lincoln Drive, parcel ID 17494-0000. This is the same address as the prior item. Relevant background information is enclosed in your packet. Staff recommendation through the Director of Development Services is that the commission conduct the first public hearing. Mr. Mayor?
If you'd like to speak about item 7G, please come forward. Anyone on 7G? Seeing none, closing public comments.
First reading, ordinance 3295.2, an ordinance zoning a parcel of land located at 1310 Lincoln Drive, Panama City, having approximately .126 acres, recreation, providing for severability and effective date.
Audience participation. You have three minutes to come forward and speak. We only speak about the items related to the agenda. There's a lot of new faces in the audience, so we're not discussing Marina stuff or Tru Dale Park stuff or Robert Kane and Mary Kane Park. We're not discussing that tonight. But even related to the upcoming agenda items, we are discussing. So if you wish to discuss those items, please come forward. We have a lot more meetings related to those topics, kind of. You got to talk?
Three minutes.
Do we miss everybody?
Yes, sir.
Especially for you. You don't have to share in three minutes.
I walk the P and S 14 Maple Avenue. I keep hearing everybody saying sometime we passed the bullet. This thing was done years ago. And I think these folks now wish that they had went on and got into the city. We probably would not have this what we're having now today. City never forced anybody. I know I worked for them for 31 years, never forced anybody to get on city sewer, never.
Which?
We lay sewer.
Which item were we speaking about today?
Yes. It goes A, the first one. Yes. Six A, I believe.
Gotcha.
Oh, 6A. All right, thank you.
You got me?
Yes, sir.
All right. It was probably cheaper then. Folks could get on sewer for $30. Really, they could get on it free when we first put it in. They got on it free. After that, they did $30. Now, I don't know how the building department did, how they did. They added it to the sewer. Well, on the water, with the water bill. But now, I... The water bill, I don't know why we want to have so... Make these prices so high. I don't know. Y'all already know how many folks in this city that is not on city water and sewer. Babur, most of those folks. Jakes Avenue, most of those folks. Adopsen, not to get on sewer. The state came in. The state did this to you. The state did this. You're putting it on nobody else. You're putting on the health department. Health department is part of the state. They're doing their job, what they've been told to do. Anybody that had a separate tank, they were going to have to get on city sewer. That's not no push-on. So, and I hope we're not being reddish from the plant, that the plant is showing more water, sewer usage on water than what we're paying them. Some of that water could be coming from the ground usage. And I hope that ain't what y'all planning this on. Y'all changing outlines, y'all getting rid of some of that problem. Most of you ain't got rid of it yet. But I hope we're not being midget by the plants, by what the usage is on this sewer.
Thank you. Anyone else related to the upcoming agenda items? Yes, ma'am. Good evening.
Good evening. How's everyone today?
Very well.
I'm glad to hear that. Brenda Lewis Williams, 2748 Oak Hammock Drive, 32401. I have a question in reference to item 10A. And it's just, I read the letter, but to what end? And you promised me we'd get answers, mayor, okay, to our questions. I just want to know to what end? Is this because the rescue mission is not going to be used, or we're supplementing or adding to? And then the other one, it's not... And I made a little toodle-doodle about that today. I'm sure some of you saw it. If you didn't, you'll see it later. But it's not my issue. But what I'm concerned with is that I don't believe that Mr. Clubs, he's here, he can speak for himself. But I don't believe that he's getting a fair shake with what he asked. He sent in a letter, rescinded his offer because you all wanted him to jump through some hoops, which I thought was not equitable at all, considering that the gentleman who wanted the parcel to enhance his liquor store came back. And I've been informed that he was able to purchase that parcel. So Mr. Clubs should get the same... He doesn't even know I'm saying this stuff. So he should get the same consideration. Right is right, wrong is wrong. Do the right thing.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Anyone else? Closing public comments. I want to be considered, Jenna. Do I have a motion to accept the consent of them?
Motion.
Second. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Commissioner Granger?
Yes.
Commissioner Street?
Yes.
Commissioner Hughes?
Yes.
Commissioner Lucas?
Yes.
Mayor Branch?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
10A.
So, good afternoon, everybody. The rescue mission, which is doing great work in our community, is seeking our support in a letter form of a project they have to build an emergency shelter for men on the men's campus on Allen Avenue and for women on the women's campus off of 11th Street. And so that has come before the commission. And Mr. Ross Clemens is here this evening, the executive director of the rescue mission. And I'd like to ask him to come forward and speak on behalf of his request.
Good evening. Thank you, Ms. Lucas. Thank you, commissioners. Ross Clemens, executive director of Panama City Rescue Mission. I have additional architectural designs here if anybody needs to see them. As most of you know, I have a business downtown. In the course of my time downtown, we've had homeless... I've had homeless come up and relieve themselves in my foyer. And I've had homeless, a homeless gentleman by the name of Robert pass away behind my back door. So I have a choice to make. I can be outraged by what some of the homeless are doing downtown and how it might impact my business. Or I can look at what I would deem an avoidable death and choose to get involved and try to So I chose the latter, started leaning into the rescue mission, and I've discovered that helping the homeless works. We can succeed at helping them, and we have. We can succeed at helping them break the cycle of addiction. We can succeed at helping them re-enter the workforce. We can succeed at helping them process trauma that hasn't been addressed. And we can share the love of Jesus with them and plug them into church communities in a way that is supportive to them re-entering our community. Over the last three years, we have helped 258 people get clean, get employed, and get into sustainable housing.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Honestly, it's a community-wide effort. We've discovered that when we collectively engage in it, we can make a difference. This is only accomplished through broad support. I'm just going to rattle off some of it because I do think it's relevant. We've got San Andrews Baptist that provides free medical care. When it's something that can't be dealt with by them, PanCare leans in. I've got First Baptist that teaches in multiple locations, addiction recovery. Life management provides mental health screening for the folks. And when they identify an issue, they queue them up for long-term help. North Star Church provides hot meals. Emmercoast Fellowship, four grocery stores donate the food that feeds our folks. 54 churches and 3,500 folks in Panama City support us financially. And then they come down and volunteer. They teach my classes, they help us pass out food, they help us feed folks. When we, as a community, lean in, it works. When that whole healthcare, mental healthcare, church, food, when that whole community leans in, it works. I didn't know that three years ago. I had no clue. It's been a privilege to see the folks in our community that are dedicated to helping and doing something about it. And it's been a great privilege to see folks get saved, rescued, and re-enter the workforce. The only thing that limits us is infrastructure. So that's why I have made or initiated an appropriation request to the state legislature. State legislature, those are smart folks. You guys know what it's like to try to push something through there. It's not going to happen unless they believe you support it. Therefore, I'm asking you for your support. Specifically, it's for homeless shelters at the two locations Mrs. Lucas mentioned. We're going to quickly make a distinction. What we're doing right now is program. I don't take people in unless they're clean and they're willing to commit to the process. That means I turn away 95% of the folks. There's two reasons for doing homeless shelters, in my mind. One is just the love of Jesus on some folks that are hurting. But honestly, there's a tactical reason. 258 folks in three years isn't enough. I believe, oh, I know we can do more. It's just a limitation of infrastructure. And if we can have a shelter, if I can have a place where I can get these people out of the woods, get them out of the survival defensive huddle that they're living in, get them into shelter for a bit where they can see what's happening in the program, where I can gain their trust, I'm confident that we can increase the number of homeless that enter the program and they get clean and they can get back into your workforce. I ask your support. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you, and thank you for the good work that you've done in the past three years. I support this because of the work that I do in community as well and know that in many instances, we can't volunteer our way out of the crisis. We need paid staff. We need the infrastructure that you're talking about. This helps us to help the citizens in our community, our downtown and other business corridors. And so I would ask my colleagues on the desk as well to support the letter going forth so that we can build an emergency shelter. Programming means that they have to meet criteria, as he said. Emergency shelter is just getting someone shelter, getting them out of the elements off the streets and as a first step and a very needed step. No matter where we travel in the city, on a given day, I see three to five people that I can identify as homeless throughout our community. And this is a concerted way to help them. So I'd ask my colleagues on the desk to support this effort.
Ross, can you explain to us the reason for needing our support on the grant because what it's not with the program in terms of religion versus not?
Thank you. I do think that's an important distinction. What I'm... What I'm currently doing, as I rattled off the list of our supporters, is primarily from churches and from church members. And we are pursuing a faith-based program. Our addiction recovery program is a faith-based program. The shelter doesn't need to be. I'm conscious of the issues of going to the state and trying to ask them to do something that would be faith-based. So I'm not doing that. The shelter is purely an emergency shelter. We will not be attempting any Bible study classes at the shelter. We are providing shelter and food and honestly trying to break the cycle of the lifestyle that they're in. But there is, there will be a distinction between the two programs. We're talking to Doorways. Doorways can provide us with state and federal funds to staff it because that shelter will not be faith-based. The program that I'm currently running will remain faith-based. Thank you.
Anyone else?
So Ross, and I apologize. I thought that these questions got sent to you, but I don't guess in the delay they did. So I have fielded a couple of questions, and so.
Please.
I know you can probably easily answer. So there has been obviously concern expressed by neighboring businesses and residents. So I felt like your explanation was very helpful into kind of giving the context of what you're exactly proposing. But a couple of things that you and I talked about, are you guys, have you guys looked at other locations? Are you willing to look at other locations? And do you guys, could you explain to us what it would take to actually have a different location? Because I know you have infrastructure that's already built where you're at.
Sure. And I get it. I get the concerns. Obviously, our preference would be to do it on our current site because if I move somewhere else, I've currently got two sites. If I move somewhere else, I've got three sites. So I'm covering down on more locations. Part of the reasoning behind putting it on the existing sites is so that our existing buildings can support them. I have commercial kitchens at both of the existing locations. I have laundry at both of the existing locations. There's a very high laundry need for a shelter. That's 43 beds that you're doing the linens on every night. So I was planning on being able to support them with the additional laundry of the existing buildings. Somewhere else.
How much value is like put into those infrastructure? I'm just curious on a number of like how much infrastructure you guys have on your campus currently? And if you don't know anything.
Well, so I mean, I had a broad idea of what was going to happen tonight. So the insured value of the existing building at Allen Avenue is 1.5 million. The insured value of the building on 11th Street is $495,000. So there's roughly 2 million in the two existing structures. The value, it was tough to sling together the value on the plats that currently aren't being used, but just somewhere between probably $100,000, $200,000 worth of plats around the Allen Avenue location, not counting the one that my building sits on. So those are the unused properties. It is possible to put it somewhere else. We just have to, there's a number of considerations. There's the additional expense of the commercial kitchen. No, I don't know what that is yet, the additional expense of additional laundry. As I've explained to several of you, we need to be on a trolley line. Our goal is to get people back into employment. So we need to be at a place where they can readily access transportation. And I did some checking of our folks right now, particularly the men on Allen Avenue. We've got about 13 guys right now. Five of them work downtown in the immediate area. So I do, I want you to understand, I do have folks that walk from my building to work. And in that sense, 609 Allen Avenue is a great place. I've got good access to healthcare and I've got access to the kind of jobs that my kind of folks, you know, got a shot at, the retail and the restaurants in the downtown area. That's what makes 609 Allen good. Can we do it somewhere else? It's possible. It just has, it's additional staffing for me. That's a challenge. That's a big challenge. I barely pull off what I pull off staffing-wise. If I got to run, you know, I got cooks at both locations. If I got a third location, that's a third cook. There will be additional increases in staff. So hear me, I'm not saying no, but it does cause me concern. And the additional concern really would be one of timing. We've gotten this thing in, this state of Florida congressional budget cycle. It would really be, one big question for me would be how quickly we could come up with whatever you're proposing because I wouldn't want it to slide a budget cycle.
Yeah, and I don't have anything alternatively to propose, Ross. Really, really two things that, you know, I feel like, I feel like what you've proposed is definitely very defined. So there's one aspect that, yeah, we get asked all the time, I mean, I'm sure you guys have gotten asked, why can't we go some, why can't we move someplace else? Why can't we do those things? And I wanted you to have an opportunity to explain the infrastructure that exists where you are. But the second piece is, maybe there's a way for us to do, hey, this is what you're proposing, how it will operate, that we mutually agree that that's how it would operate. So your leadership has been fantastic in what you guys have done with the program. Your board has been incredibly active about taking tours of the facility. So I understand what you guys are doing and the care that you put into that. I think a lot of the angst that exists in the community is because maybe previous things that have happened. And so I think what you're proposing, as long as we're committed to operating within those parameters, I think that is, that is a key component to keeping trust with the people that we work with as well. So I don't know if that makes sense, what I'm saying, Ross, is like, it's like, hey, you know, there's one aspect of, yes, there would be a huge investment to try to find a campus that maybe is larger than what you have, someplace that, hey, you can build the infrastructure that you need for a long-term, multi-step process that gives you room to expand. There's another aspect that's like, hey, what is being agreed to? How does it operate? And does it stay within those operational parameters? So anyway, that was it. I've not had any feedback on the women's shelter too. So as far as that's concerned, like I haven't expressed, no one has expressed any concern in regards to that operation or anything else like that. And like I said, I think we're all victim. I mean, it happens in city government too. We're all, we're all, you know, we're not only measured by our leadership today, but previous as well. And so I commend you guys for what you've done in re-establishing your program and trying to help the way that you do.
Thank you, sir. It does bring up one more point I would like to add. I have wanted to stay tied at the tip with the city on this. So when we reopened, we went and met with Chief of Police, with Chief Smith, and we have invited them to attend every board meeting. So and they're, and they're doing it. So we have police presence at every board meeting. We take their input. They listen to us, they can relay it to the chief, and they've been, they've played a helpful, productive role, and we will, of course, continue to do that.
And I think that's a key component to creating successful relationship because, you know, I mean, we all know where things could go wrong, but oftentimes we forget where they go right. And so, and I think that's a good example of that.
Ross, how many extra women do you have at Bethel? In the need of, you said 15 guys?
Yeah, 23.
At Bethel?
Yes.
Wow.
We have a little more, the men's side opened more recently. Took us longer to rebuild that building. So we already had the women's fully staffed. That's a function of staff, not bedrooms. And I have three staff for the women's side. If I can get to three on the men's side, I'll bring the men's numbers up.
So Ross, amazing job what you've done with the Rescue Mission. And as I told you the other day, that I believe that these types of actions are best done by nonprofits. And so I think you're a shining example of that. So I'm supportive of this. It shocks a lot of people, I think, to find out that Panama City, Bay County, in our surrounding counties do not have an emergency shelter. And when people find themselves in a situation where they are homeless, they, it's, you know, 8:00 PM at night on a Friday, Doorways, I mean, they'll try to help, but there's really nowhere for you to go, which is a very, very rough night. And I know that that's, that's not exactly always the situation that happens, but the fact that we don't have an emergency shelter is concerning to me. So people, people have, there was somebody in my life that would have wound up homeless had they not had the support from their family. And if they would have been dropped down here from Dothan or Alabama or Georgia or some northern state and then abandoned, they would have had nowhere to go that evening. So that kind of opened my eyes up to the fact that there's nothing. So I am supportive of this, yeah.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, just kind of echoing what Josh said, as long as we're not regressing back to that Rescue Mission of the 80s. And that was also the scapegoat downtown for decades. Yeah, it was, that's all the Rescue Missions fall, which I don't believe it truly was. You know, and I've expressed in email what I experienced growing up at the car wash next door was all the problems that sort of was coming through that area. And so not regressing, but you've done a marvelous job. I've been to the board meetings. It's fantastic stuff. We've supported the 5K, that sort of thing. So I'm supportive.
So is there a motion?
With all that being said, I'd just like to say, there but by God's grace go we. And so with that, I move that we support the Rescue Mission and the excellent work that Mr. Clemens has done and his staff.
I'm just looking at that. Any discussion?
I just want to add, Ross, I would just, whatever you ask in the legislative, just keep your options as broad as you can. So as we continue the conversation, there's flexibility to tackle any options that may come available.
I understand. I can do that.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Granger.
Yes.
Commissioner Street.
Yes.
Commissioner Hughes.
Yes.
Commissioner Lucas.
Yes.
Mayor Branch.
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Item 11A is a notice of vacancy on the Panama City Planning Board. Panama City Planning Board has one position for the mayor's appointee available as a result of the changes associated with ordinance number 3284. Terms for members appointed because of the change will begin on January 1st, 2026. Do you have a nominee?
I'm going to wait until close to Christmas. It won't be Santa.
I got to check with two more people.
They're going to respond with, there's no more qualified. You're going to respond with, there's no one more qualified than myself.
That's true. You're appointing yourself.
Do you want a recess? Let's do a 10-minute recess.
Thank you.
Let's get started again. Item 12A.
Item 12A is consideration to approve the fiscal year 2025 budget amendment resolution 2025 1118.1. As background information, this amendment is to account for any significant revenue and correlating expenses received during the fiscal year that were not previously amended in the budget. Staff recommendation through the city manager's office that the commission approved this request. Mr. Mayor?
Yes, I'll entertain a motion.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, I just want to point out that this is a much, much smaller amount than in previous years. Thank you very much. That's it.
All right, please call the roll.
Commissioner Granger.
Yes.
Commissioner Street.
Yes.
Commissioner Hughes.
Yes.
Commissioner Lucas.
Yes.
Mayor Branch.
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
That is in deep appreciation to Ms. Waldron, Ms. Perman, and all of our directors for all their good work on that. So thank you.
Title to Resolution 2025 1118.1, a resolution providing for the final amendment of the approved fiscal year 2425 budget.
Item 12B is consideration to approve budget amendment resolution 2025 1118.2 to carry forward fiscal year 2025 funds into fiscal year 2026. As background information, this resolution is to account for funds that have been encumbered by purchase orders and have been carried forward by the soft closed general ledger entries to fiscal year 2026, or were not encumbered by purchase order in 2025, but will be expended in fiscal year 2026, utilizing funds budgeted in fiscal year 2025. Staff recommendation through the city manager's office that the commission approved this request. Mr. Mayor?
I will entertain a motion.
A motion to approve. I do have a question.
Second.
Good. Discussion, go ahead.
So I just want to make sure, are these all of our, because they're not labeled by projects. So are these SRF, you know, HRP? I see all these soft closed numbers. This looks different than what I'm used to seeing, so can you?
These are not SRF or HRP. Those are, those are capital budgets that would not need to be come to you for carry forward. Those automatically would get carried forward when they were, they were already approved when we initially adopted the capital budgets. These are annual carry forwards. And the journal report that you see are all purchase orders that were encumbered in 25 for year 2025. They're being carried over into 26 for operational or grant type.
Okay. So then that's going to lead me to my question on the, so on the soft ledger report, it says $100 million. What is, like, are you saying that we're carrying forward that? That's why I thought it was like a projects or something.
That's what it says.
There are projects on here. Come up, can you come up here, Samantha? Because it does look like there are projects.
I hope that there's projects. I understand it's not on the detail, the one that we just approved before, there's not, so.
Can you correct me, Samantha?
Do I need to introduce myself? I'm Samantha Pearman, Budget Manager. Hi. This is the first time you all have met me talk up here.
You're doing great.
The carry forwards for the purchase orders do include any capital project purchases because that is an automatic entry into New World that we do have to get approved that way. However, the carry forwards that are presented in the detail do not include the capital amounts. Those are just for fiscal funds that we budget, such as the general fund, the CRAs, housing and community services, utilities, environmental services, et cetera.
So on your journal report?
On the journal entries, it will have capital entries because those are encumbered purchase orders. But on the carry forward amounts that we have, those are not the capital carry.
So in the general report, there could be expenses on here that have already been incurred from the previous year?
Not expenses, but encumbrances.
Okay. So when you're saying encumbrances, are you talking about SRF?
Yes. There will be encumbrances for SRF, HRP, all of those acronyms.
EMRC Rec Center.
Yes.
You name it. So, okay.
Yes, those purchase orders have been carried forward. If there are any funds not encumbered on a purchase order, those don't show up on here because those are capital projects. And those funding, that funding has already been approved.
So this funding has been approved, but it hasn't been expended yet?
Correct.
Okay.
It's a little different than we've done it previously.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
And I didn't, we don't mean for confusion, but it helps prevent any kind of issues in the capital project accounts so that they can be trued up. And in the fiscal year accounts, those are funds that we statutorily have to have approved and have to have done and within a certain time frame from the closing of the budget year.
Yes, okay. So then I'm going to pivot to you, Jan. So there's a, there's $100 million worth of, in this journal entries categories, anything that we should be drawing attention to in this? Or is this just, this is what we're using the revolving credit line for?
The only thing that I have made a note of is that there, you're increasing your general fund budget by another $620,550.
And that was on the previous action, though, correct?
No, the previous budget amendment was balanced. So you did not increase or decrease the general fund budget.
Okay.
This carry forward is carrying forward expenses that were encumbered in 2025. They were approved in 2025, but now we're moving them into 2026. But there is no corresponding revenue to offset these expenses.
So now with that question, then back over to the budget office. So how are we?
That revenue was already received in '25.
Is this the property sale? Is this having to do with that?
Not with that. The carry forwards that we have in the general fund for 2025 into 2026 deal with our restricted revenues, such as the fire protection services and the building permits. That's being carried forward because we have to. The $325,000 was a donation from the CRA that was received into the general fund, but not expended. And.
Could, I think, so the reality is, we don't really have a choice whether we approve this or not without going into default.
And we don't have a balanced budget.
So like what I.
No, the budget's balanced, always, always, every day, every single day.
If we're getting fiscal year '25.
But what Jan's communicating is. But what Jan, what Jan's communicating is relevant, is in we don't have any new revenue. What I don't want to see is our gap get bigger than what it already was. And so if you guys could just, after this, I don't need this right now, show me where this additional $600,000 is going to, of, of increase in the budget, where we are getting that revenue from.
So that would have been received in 2025. The building services restricted revenue carryforward was received through building permits for $127,000. The $325,000 again was a donation from the, or a contribution from the CRA. So that's about 450. The insurance reimbursement for the Servpro invoices for the $100,000 was received from the insurance company.
So is this changing reserve numbers?
Yes.
Want me to talk about, okay, so that's, so, so the reality is it's coming from the reserves?
That you just did in the financial report.
So that, that's, that's what I was looking for. I was trying to figure out where the money's coming from.
Right, it'll, it's in the general fund, but it will come technically from the reserve line in '26 because it was received previously.
If money's coming in on that losing out of reserve?
Because it's, it's already been, the books are closed for 2025. So all the, all the revenues and expenses go away, start back over at zero in 2026.
So we have the money, so it's not gonna hurt us in our reserve because the money's, we have the money to pay, so pulling it out.
Reserves are still not healthy.
I get it, I know we are, but we're not, we're not gonna jump off the cliff because we're trying to figure this out.
To Jan's point, like, like, this is me personally, how I'm tracking things, I'm trying to figure out what our gap is, because we're gonna walk into next year with a gap. I want to know so we can get to a realistic picture before we get into budget season. I don't want to be sitting with, you know, two months to go before you got to statutorily approve a budget and then we're trying to figure out how we balance in a budget. So what, since this, this was a change, so that's why I was a little bit confused with my questions. I do understand now, but if we could maybe have a recap, like in the next week or two, just to kind of get on the same page and so I can get a new gap number. What's the gap?
Well, you get a monthly, you're getting a monthly report now that has a gap number in it every, you get it every month.
But I, I can't remember off the top of my head what the reserve number was last month, so I'm like, I'm.
Well, you have one, you have one in this package?
Oh, okay, great. Is it reflected in that, in that report?
Yes.
This change?
No.
Okay, so whatever we see in this report?
This is in November, this is October's report.
Thank you.
I'm always, I'm always behind because I, I deal in real numbers, not budget month number.
Okay, so, so whatever number we see in reserve, we should be able to take into account $640,000 and that should come off of what we're about to see.
Exactly, yeah.
Thank you.
You'll see it next month.
So is this because of the service delivery model budget that we're gonna get next year?
Right? Yeah, right?
Oh, you created this problem?
Remember when we voted? When we voted to have the service delivery?
But you're, you're right. Commissioner Street.
This, this issue today?
It's a much smaller number than it has been in past, much, much smaller.
Oh yeah, I mean, the first one I got was like, like, way more than this, so.
Not because of that, because of the service delivery model. Just pointing that out.
I'm just gonna blame it on you.
I'm used to it.
All right. Sorry for the confusing questions, but I was confused, so if I confuse anyone else, I apologize. We do, this report is different than what we've gotten previously, so that's why I had some additional questions.
So will this look different under a service delivery model?
I would imagine so. The budget delivery that we have now is broken down into items and accounts that don't necessarily take into service program models. So under a program delivery budget, it would look slightly different and be possibly a little easier to understand instead of just.
In summary, though, this, this is reflective of our, our current work, program of work that's being executed around the facility, the city. And so what it is represented of is there's $100 million worth of infrastructure work that's going on across the city. And there's a lot of projects that are being managed to, to move our city forward.
Absolutely.
So appreciate everybody and your work. I'll be, I'll be having further conversations on our reserve numbers.
She's.
Thank you.
We have a motion in a second.
About the service delivery model budget that we're supposed to get.
Didn't have anything to do with that.
They did not. It was a door that was open, so.
Did I already motion to approve? I'll motion to approve.
Please call the roll.
Thank you.
Commissioner Granger?
Yes.
Commissioner Street?
Yes.
Commissioner Hughes?
Yes.
Commissioner Lucas?
Yes.
Mayor Branch?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Commission has approved not 12C.
12B.
12B, excuse me. It is resolution 2025-1118.2, a resolution providing for the amendment of the approved fiscal year 25-26 budget to budget carryforward amounts from fiscal year '25 to '26.
Item 12C is consideration to approve resolution 2025-1118.3 authorizing the city of Panama City to accept state-funded grant for school safety in the project in the amount of $456,323.00 and approve the accompanying budget amendment resolution 2025-1118.4. Background information, Engineering Division is requesting approval of resolution 2025-1118.3 authorizing the city to accept state-funded grant managed by the FDOT for planning of the Panama City Schools, School Safety Zone project. This project is for the design, right-of-way acquisition, construction, and CEI Panama City Schools Own Safety Project related to Bay High School. This project will consist of constructing the roadway extension of 12th Street from Caldwell Drive to Hamilton Avenue, connecting Harrison Avenue with MLK Boulevard, and the closure of East 13th Street from Magnolia Avenue to Wilson Street. Right-of-way acquisition will be required. Staff recommendation through the Director of Public Works is that the commission approve this request. Mr. Mayor?
I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Commissioner Granger?
Yes.
Commissioner Street?
Yes.
Commissioner Hughes?
Yes.
Commissioner Lucas?
Yes.
Mayor Branch?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Commission has approved resolution number 2025-1118.3, a resolution of the city, commission of the city of Panama City authorizing the city to accept a state-funded grant for Panama City Schools Own Safety Project and enter into the agreement.
Item 12D is consideration to approve budget amendment resolution 2025-1118.5 for the purchase of a small street sweeper in the amount of $218,340.00. As background information, this unit will be a multi-hog CV350 sweeper, stage five, from Jetback Equipment Company through Sourcewell Contract listed here. City currently does not have a street sweeper to clean the new Harrison Avenue streetscapes without causing damage to the pavers. This sweeper will give us the ability to not only sweep the pavers, but also has attachments to clean the pavers, sidewalks, and multi-use paths around the city. Staff recommendation through the Director of Public Works is that the commission approved this request. And I'll just add, there was an additional memo circulated answering some questions by one of the commissioners earlier this afternoon. Mr. Mayor?
Yes, I will entertain a motion. I'll make a motion so we can have a discussion.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Along with the $214,000 investment is gonna come maintenance, and gas, and insurance, and care. And there's a, if there's an adaption, an adaption that can go in this one, there's an adaption, you know, the one that I, that we have, and the one, in the department that has one person in it. We do not need this, we can farm it out. And if there's a, if there's a way to, I think what we ought to do is go out and see, and do some comparisons, not tell me that, that the, that somebody in another department is gonna take care of the maintenance. But this is not a $215,000 investment. It's a quarter of a million dollars minimum, and it, it's one of those gifts, it's gonna keep on giving. And I want to take care of Harrison Avenue. And I bet you, if we go investigate our street sweeper that we have, that I've never seen, that I bet there's an adaption, an adaption we can put on that, maybe do the same, or have we investigated that? I also brought up concerns of, should this be privatized? Because, I mean, it was last Christmas, I came out after the parade, there was just candy trash blows the next morning, blowing everywhere. I called Jonathan, I'm like, why isn't the street sweeper running as it gets broken? And so, like, to me, there, I do also show the concern of, like, adding more equipment to something that we should be discussing privatization of potentially. And we haven't had those conversations, so I had to bring it up as well.
Is there a private company in Panama City that's street sweeping?
We did receive an email from someone who was interested in expenses that we currently have.
Yeah, so I'll, I'll, I can, I can support going out and, and research, I will tell you just from, because I got managed parking lots, so it is very difficult to find someone that can operate on the schedule that you needed to. But, you know, I mean, I say that as in, city hasn't gone out to look at privatized street sweeping since, I don't know, it's been a couple of years since we bought the first one. So I think it's prudent to look at all options. And so if we want to table this until that point and getting those quotes, just so that we can see a comparison, I would be prepared that this is a specialized piece of equipment that was part of the discussion and even whether we did the pavers, should we have done asphalt, like, that was a big part of it at the beginning, because there is a different kind of maintenance that has to be done on Harrison Avenue than a normal asphalt street, so.
And there again is my reason for having the savings account, when we're gonna manage something, that vote was made, and there was no, there was nothing, and the backside too, take care of it. Well, and even for the fairness of downtown, it's, it's, maybe the DIB should be participating in part of it.
Yes.
If they say, you know, Harrison Avenue is not capped up to the cleanliness that we want, maybe they should be discussing purchasing this. If this is the only use of this equipment is Harrison Avenue. I mean, they're already paying for downtown landscape, doing landscaping, so.
I think, I think the first step is go, let's go get, get a quote so that we can see some comparison in cost. I think realistically, it probably privatization's not gonna be cheaper than this, but I like your idea of, like, maybe we look at how this gets shared so that it can be maintained in that area and that district, so.
Well, what, to me, it's, everything we do has to have three bids. Why not this? We didn't even try. And we just wanted to drop $215,000. It doesn't make sense to me, and it's specialized, so it can be used on one road. And that, that one road is gonna continue, unless we're gonna talk.
That's a different way than I was looking at it before. When we, when we did the original street sweeper, that was actually through an EPA penalty. So FDP was penalizing us for sewer spills at that point in time, and they let us, hey, stormwater is a big component, and so they allowed us to do street sweeping as part of that process. And we get paid by FDOT to do street sweepings. I don't know if everybody knows that, but they pay us to do street sweeping in-house. So there is money involved in it. But this particular type of equipment doesn't really, from what I've read, I don't know that it, it truly affects us. And so I think it's good, we can go look at it, look at price, and then bring it back to us next month.
Yeah, so.
I would draw our attention to the caveats here in the background, that this specialized sweeper is needed because our current sweeper is too big and too powerful for what we need for the pavers. And so if we're gonna go out to bid or at least get some, some quotes, if not a formal bid, we need to make sure that the street sweeper that's proposing can particularly meet the needs that we have of our specialized sweeper.
I would ask the DIB, why don't you guys pay to have Harrison Avenue blown off with blowers? It probably costs 500 bucks.
Pressure washed.
Or pressure washed.
Pavers cannot be pressure washed.
Not the pavers, I'm talking the sidewalk.
Sidewalk, they're already doing that. And so that's my point, if, if the DIB and the downtown owners want to have a higher level of cleanliness, the DIB is the mechanism to bring that to them, in my opinion, so.
I agree.
Wow.
And I was excited about driving.
Respectfully, Mr. Mayor, I mean, the, the streets are our responsibility, we're not gonna use this on FDOT. If I may, Mr. Murphy, they've been doing this research for a year, they have answers to all your questions right now. I thought we addressed them in our one-on-ones, but we've already done all of this, we've been working on this for quite a while.
Jonathan, why don't we, why don't we go out and get another bid so we can see what we're doing?
Okay, I, I, this was done with a state contract, which was already done, so the pre-bid for this is already done on the front end, that's how you're using a state contract?
I, I don't have an issue with the purchase way that you guys are doing the purchase contract. So the, the Sourcewell, I'm familiar with Sourcewell, great solution on purchasing equipment. I think what the question I heard was, is there a private company that will do the entire thing? And is there somebody that, realistically, and I, I commit this to you guys or that, it's gonna, there may be, this equipment may be so specialized, it either has to be manually done, like Alan just suggested, or maybe there is somebody that has a specialized piece of equipment.
For me, if they said, the real use of this is the five blocks of Harrison Avenue, or the four blocks, to me, that have them blow it off once a week, and the payback of that's decades from now, to get to $215,000 or $18,000.
Yeah. We're, we're not just talking about blowing it off, it has to be scrubbed in a certain way, and, and we're also using this on sidewalks and tighter areas so it can be used all around the whole city, not just on the pavers. And I just want to clarify that, so.
Yeah, so we did do a lot of research on this, our current.
Just name and title for the public.
Yes, Clint Murphy, your Director of Public Works. We did do a lot of research on this, our current street sweeper is way too big and powerful. The wire brushes that are used on that piece of equipment is too abrasive for paver applications. There is not a, we did research, and there's not an apparatus to retrofit onto that piece of equipment. So this, this is our best plan moving forward. I'm not familiar with any contractor locally that has the type of equipment we need for this. That doesn't mean they can go out and purchase it, but we're getting it tax-free through the Sourcewell contract. And what we see with Waste Pro, for instance, they pay their drivers, you know, they're paying their drivers 30 bucks an hour, paying 18. So I fail to see how a private contractor is gonna compete with, with the pricing we've got here. So it is our, and again, as per Jonathan, we, we will be using this on our multi-use paths, which are gonna be increasing, hopefully in the near future. So there are other applications besides just downtown.
So Clint, when you're, when you're doing your analysis, 30 dollars an hour and 18, that's not, that's all, that's not all that's in there. Are you, are you including the maintenance and the, and the expense, the insurance, the gas, all that that goes with it into your analysis? Because all we're doing is paying 30 dollars an hour under your, under your example to another company.
Well, contract.
In a jump to, if your example is 30 dollars an hour versus 18, if I put all the, all the pieces and parts into what it's gonna take to operate this and own it, we're gonna be 30 dollars an hour as well. So we're equal then, right?
Well, I was just comparing labor, so a private contractor would still have maintenance, fuel, upkeep as, as well.
Right.
So.
I think it's worth giving it a shot.
Okay.
It's not, it's not, one shot, one buy is a forever, is a forever decision, and if we can save money, let's look at doing that. Right. I mean, I, I'd love to know how many miles of multi-use trail we're gonna have, and how much we do have that will be used, and then have the DIB weigh in to see if they want to participate, and if they want to provide a service to downtown themselves.
they want to participate, and if they want to provide a service to downtown themselves. I do agree that the streets are our opinion, but that there's a, there's a clear reason that our traditional street sweeper won't work on the, our fancy nice street. And so to me, the D I B should have the alternative of saying, okay, well, we'll, we'll hire someone to blow it off or sweep it with a push blower. But I, I think they should be weighing in on whatever we're about to spend money on so they have an opinion as well.
And Clint, I think we may, we may end up right back at the same spot. I think, somebody said that there's somebody that sent something that says, hey, we could do this, or something like that. So maybe that could be something, you guys look at whoever that vendor was, and then let us know from that point of, is there anyone that could do it and what it would cost? So I do understand it's very specialized. I'm thinking through like, the promenade around the Marina, I'm thinking about several other things, that maybe there is a larger thing, and maybe we just need to get a better picture of what that looks like. But, you know.
Maybe we budget for it.
It's hard for me to just say, hey, I'm not going to go price check with somebody. I mean, like, that's just, that's really what you're getting from me, is like, hey, you know, if there's somebody that's saying that, I'd like to maybe go one more time and check before we, you know, bite it off. But Sourcewell, pricing, all those things.
What source, what is that?
It's a purchasing co-op, that, that, it's a state contract.
It means we bought it off a previous, other municipality bid, so it's already been bid out, and that's how we're buying it. That's why purchasing policy.
So it's gone through a bidding process, and these companies compete so that they can sell 15 of these. And so it typically drives them.
Does our waiting affect the price? For instance.
I don't know how long the quote's good for. I mean, we won't be back in time, this is, this will push it into January, because we'll have to go out and competitively post a request for proposal, and that won't be done in time for the December meeting, so then we'll end up into January.
Is that what you guys were asking?
I just don't know the timeline.
Try to do a price check with whoever the vendor was. What were you guys thinking?
I think, I think we could do that on our own, man.
Do what on our own?
No, it's over $100,000. We'll have to competitively go out and request it, yeah. Because we're, if we go with the, if we go with the pre-bid with this, we don't, because it's through a state contract, we don't have to go out for a competitive. But if we want to do a request for proposals, we'll have to run that through the purchasing division.
If it's under $100,000 to have a private company do it, we have to put it out for RFP?
It's not likely to be.
If, if staff believes that it's going to be over $100,000, we have to go out for competitive bid.
And I believe it will be, because it's, it's only six blocks we're asking for, and I don't know the frequency at which Mr. Murphy is suggesting. But I would say, we would probably have more success bidding out our everyday, larger street sweeping operation, that, that only has one employee associated with it than we would with this. Prior to Hurricane Michael, we had a contract with a vendor. They swept every city street. We had a spreadsheet of how many times they swept it. They used two street sweepers. They had a lead and a trail vehicle on, on state highways, and it was a big operation. As, as a result of Hurricane Michael, obviously, our streets were impassable for, for years, for street sweeping at least. And so DEP said, hey, look, as part of your MS4 permit that allows you to operate a stormwater system, they said, we're not going to require you to sweep your streets until you guys get a hold. So that, that period has come and gone. We went out after, once that, that waiver expired, and went out and bid, did this competitive bid process, and, and, and we did it several times without success. That's our larger street sweeping, the big Elgin truck that we have. Typically, street sweeping operations have two, because they do break down. They're ingesting nails, debris, like the stuff you wouldn't imagine goes into those toddlers. This is, we don't, we don't envision this as being that type of, of vehicle. This would, in our mind, be something that we could push-button with, with Clint, and Clint could say, hey, drop what you're doing, get the little, you know, street sweeper and go and, you know, address this mess. This would also allow us to mount the sidewalk, and brush, and clean, and sweep the sidewalks, in addition to go back and seal it. So it's a little bit more, we get a lot more bang for the buck, if you will, from a maintenance.
It's $36,000 a block. That's what I want to point out, Neil. $36,000 a block, you just said six blocks we're trying to take care of. That's, that's a lot of money.
I'm just talking specific to Harrison Avenue. That does not include all multi-use paths. You could, we could use this in St. Andrews, we could use it in Millville on our downtown areas. There, there are a lot of applications for this particular.
Darren, let's go get a price.
Yes.
Quit trying to sell me.
Yeah, I mean, I'd trust in leasing, if that's an option too. I mean, I just, yeah. Yeah, if it's going to be used mostly on Harrison Avenue, leasing it four times a year makes sense, if that's available. So do we need a motion, or what do we need?
We have a motion and a second to discuss, which is approval.
So do we need to amend our motion?
You want a table?
We table it. And.
Right. Are you okay?
Who made the motion?
You did.
Yeah, that's what I thought. I'll, I'll amend my motion that we.
What is it amended to?
I'm going to amend it.
To what?
To, that we table this, and then, and put out an RFP for anybody that wants to give us a scope of work, and come back in, in the January meeting with that, and we can make a decision from there.
And realistically, I acknowledge what you guys are saying. We may end up right back here.
So you want a RFP for the service?
Yeah.
The service provider?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
I'm just going to back out of this one. I was behind it, because I see the utility of it.
Y'all can vote, I mean, I, I'd be able to 4-1 vote on this one, I have no problem.
You're withdrawing your second?
Yes.
I'd like just a couple, I'd like the D I B, if it's mostly the D I, mostly Harrison Avenue that's the focus, I'd like the D I B to weigh in.
I agree, I agree. Yeah. I'd rather the funding come from them, I just know that they don't have a ton.
Yeah, I mean, I, I would like them to say, oh my gosh, yes, there's such a need that Harrison Avenue needs to have this much level of care and focus right now, that we need to spend this money right now. That's what I want to hear from them. Bad motion.
Is that direction for staff?
Yeah, who do you want to hear that from, Mr. Mayor?
I'd love, I'd love the, I'd love to present this idea to the D I B at their next meeting, and have them weigh in on what do they, do they want to help pledge some money to us? Do they think the city should be spending this kind of money just on Harrison Avenue, or they would like to handle maintenance of that road? Not, not resetting pavers, although I've offered that previously, but sweeping of it, blowing of it, those sort of things.
Just Harrison Avenue, that's the.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, that's what was presented here, is this is a Harrison Avenue.
We will, we will go out for a proposal, but like, in, in my mind, as the manager of the city, if they tell me they don't want to clean it, like, I, I don't care that. I don't care what they say, because I have engineers that are in charge of this, telling me it needs to be done. We have to maintain this $16 million investment that the city made, that's all I'm saying. So, so we'll have to go out for the RFP, but like, i- if the D I B says, yeah, we don't, don't worry about it, don't do that. I'm like, oh my gosh, like, that makes me really nervous.
Harrison Avenue, point out the change and what, what the problem is with the pavers right now with the street sweeper will do, because I don't, to me, it's just a, no different than blowing it off, that's why I don't question.
Well, you got like, well, for example, because we have special events, you get grease, alcoholic beverages.
We do, we handle that, we handle it with a mop and some soap, we've done it before.
Look, man, one of the only ways, the only way we're going to change the culture of things just showing up and surprising us, is we're going to, just surprise me, didn't know what was happening. That's, and it's a $200,000 here, it's $400,000. We can slow our spending down, and this is one way. Let's question things, and let's, I mean, we can spend a million dollars just like that. Let's try to, let's try to slow our roll. There's, we may end up here, we may, we all may vote 5-0, but we didn't give it a shot to try to save some money. And that's my problem, is that we didn't even try. And show up here and tell me, here's, here's, here's somebody that we gave a, a float from, and here's our number. Because right now, I don't know what our number is, other than $213,000. What's it really going to cost me? That's, that's the stuff I'd like to know. Because it's not, it's, it's more than a $213,000 investment. And we've got to figure out a way to start slowing, or start, stop spending money like this. And this is the way. Just, and there's just little, every, every little piece here and there, that's it. $1 here, $1 there. So nobody's saying anything wrong, it's just, I'd like to know that information.
So do we need to have a motion to, how do we move this forward, Mr. Zellman?
I have a motion to table and put the, put the item out for RFP for a service provider. I do not have a second for that motion. And I also have information to direct staff to contact D I B to gauge interest in the purchase of the, the equipment or services.
Who gave that motion?
The mayor asked for us to contact, gave staff direction to contact D I B.
Right.
I just kind of put some extra language in it. To make sense. So when we do the minutes, we know what we're talking about.
We do have a motion.
So this multi-hog is not just a street sweeper, is it? It's, it's the, well, we're doing, we're asking for the city back, aren't we? Is this a device that we could also add other attachments?
Yes, there's other options we could add to it.
Yeah, I see that there's multiple things that can be added to it. I mean, I don't know if any of them would have any utility here. I don't know, I haven't dove into it that far, but.
When would this arrive if we were to move forward?
I think the lead time is three months.
There's a mower, you can get a mower on it.
So it wouldn't be here before the Christmas parade?
It's still clean. It's still clean.
So I'd like to just have this conversation later when we have some more details. So we have a motion, do we have a second? And do I have to pass the actual gamble to you in a second?
No, you can second without passing the gamble.
Well, I can.
Yeah.
Oh, I can.
Wait, don't tell him that.
Okay, well, then I'll second that motion. He didn't know that.
I'll second, I will second the motion, man. The mayor seconded the motion. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Commissioner Granger.
Yes.
Commissioner Street.
Yes.
Commissioner Hughes.
Yes.
Commissioner Lucas.
Yes.
Mayor Branch.
Yes.
Mayor Branch.
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Item 12E is consideration to approve budget amendment resolution number 20251118.6 for the purchase of three 16-yard dump trucks in the amount of $429,799.0 from 4-star Freightliner through Sourcewell contract number 032828-DAI. As background information, these units will be 2027 M2106 Freightliner chassis with 16 cubic yard dump bodies. The city is also getting a $65,000 trade-in allowance for four older dump trucks. The dump trucks that are trading in are in between 17 and 26 years old and are unable to obtain parts for them. We are unable to obtain parts for them should they break down. In addition to hauling other materials, these trucks will be used as well to support our in-house paving program once that crew is in operation, in addition to streets and drainage daily operations. Staff recommendation through the Director of Public Works is that the commission approve this request. Mr. Mayor?
Yes, I will entertain a motion.
I'll motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion?
So this will be the four, this will be four dump trucks we bought today. You need 40 dump trucks?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. We can rent them for $800, $800 a day. A lot of, that's a lot of $500,000.
Are we, are we currently leasing dump trucks?
No. Need to buy them.
So these are 17, between 17 and 26 years old?
Yes.
So, so, I mean, from our, I'm kind of curious as to why these were already on our replacement schedule.
I mean, that's, I don't have the answer to that particular question, but I do know, I mean, these are used, I mean, they're 17 to 26 years.
Yeah, I mean, they have holes in them, they have to be patched, period. Clint Murphy, Director of Public Works, we really, I mean, after Hurricane Michael, we kind of got, got away with our program, so we're just kind of trying to recover from that. So the trucks that we currently have, I mean, we can't even get replacement parts for them. So these are desperately needed.
So you're saying that we have dump trucks that are 16 years old and older?
Yes.
17?
Get it right.
Yeah, 17 years.
So we get the lifespan here, let's just conservative, this lay 10 years, for $429,799. Your price, even if we did it, you know, 260 days out of a year, that's 208,000 a year just to rent. Or lease, based on what you were, what you were suggesting. And I think the lifespan of these trucks warrants the, the price that we have here.
So I, I think, Rob, you're asking like, what's the difference between this and the other one? I mean, dump trucks are utility. I mean, there's, there's multiple things that'll be used for a dump truck.
We need dump trucks.
Yeah.
I'm not worried about that, it's just, again, are we looking other ways before we start spending?
Yes, got a lot of cool attachments.
And I had a question, what is the Environmental Services Reserve Fund? What is that?
Trash.
Yeah, solid waste.
Solid waste.
Now, I do want to caution, because I do see multiple things on our agenda that are using that specific fund.
Yeah, why would I?
I don't, I like, I think, you know, hey, guys, we just made a, made a change to your overall budget and those things, so I don't know if there's further capital projects you guys are trying to pull out of that fund. If you could give us in advance what you're thinking about, so before we get to an actual acquisition, that would be good, so.
We can do that. I think this is really it, these, because we run these things six, seven days a week and.
I'm supportive of that.
Yeah, that's correct.
And I'm in favor of giving our staff what they need to do the best job that they can do. And hampered by outdated, you know, it may work today, it may not work tomorrow, is frustrating. So we're expecting the best from our staff, we need to give them what they need. So I support it.
Thank you.
One of the other advantages, as y'all deliberate, to, you know, to controlling more of our destiny, is, you know, we get messages from all of y'all in the public, you know, 24/7. And when we control more of it, you know, myself and Mr. Murphy can say, hey, stop what you're doing right now and go take care of this problem that's happened. If we're relying at times on outside folks, they might not be able to get to us, and that, that's always a challenge and a concern.
And when they do, it'll cost us more.
Sorry, what, ma'am?
And when they do get to us, it'll cost us more.
Yes, ma'am. Especially at nights and on the weekends.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Granger.
Yes.
Commissioner Street.
Yes.
Commissioner Hughes.
Yes.
Commissioner Lucas.
Yes.
Mayor Branch.
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to backtrack just a second.
Okay.
We adopted a resolution concerning the school zone safety grant. We adopted two resolutions, and I forgot to read one of them. And I'd like to read that title. And it's resolution number 20251118.4, a resolution providing for the amendment of the approved fiscal year budget to accept and expend funding from FDOT and provide the local match for the planning of Panama City School Zone Safety Project. So we approved the grant, and now we amended our budget. Thank you.
Need to read this one, too.
And the one that I'd like to read now is budget resolution 20251118.5. Or, that's what I, that's what I meant to say, is .6. And that resolution title is a resolution providing for the amendment of the approved fiscal year 2526 budget to utilize Environmental Service Reserve Funds for the purchase of three dump trucks.
Item 12F is consideration to approve the task order from DuBerry Engineers, teamed with Half Associates and Magnum Engineering, to provide engineering design services for the post-arbitration approved 351 FEMA road segments, and to approve budget amendment resolution 20251118.7 in the amount of $256,500. As background information, at the October 28 City Commission meeting, the commission approved evaluation panel's recommendation of the above specified engineering firms to provide engineering design services for the FEMA roads projects, authorizing city staff to enter to negotiations on a task order for their professional services. Of the 351 post-arbitration approved FEMA road segments, 64 have already either been repaired, or currently being repaired or about to be repaired as part of the city's multiple other infrastructure projects. This leaves 287 road segments that will be addressed under this task order, 285 which will be milled and overlaid, with the remaining two segments being fully reconstructed. The services to be provided under this task order include geotechnical borings at each of the roadway segments, limited survey data as needed at the two full reconstruction segments, and initial engineering analysis of the results of the geotechnical borings, the roadway conditions, and the survey data. After the initial engineering analysis is complete, additional task order will be provided at that time to provide final designs, as well as construction and bid documents. The fees for all of the firms involved in this project are included in this task order. Staff recommendation through the Director of Public Works is that the commission approve this request. And I'll just note that this is all 100% FEMA reimbursable. Mr. Mayor?
Yes, I will entertain a motion. Senator?
Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll.
Commissioner Granger.
Yes.
Commissioner Street.
Yes.
Commissioner Hughes.
Yes.
Commissioner Lucas.
Yes.
Any discussion? Call the roll.
Commissioner Granger?
Yes.
Commissioner Street?
Yes.
Commissioner Hughes?
Yes.
Commissioner Lucas?
Yes.
Mayor Branch?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Resolution 20251118.7, a resolution providing for the budgeting of capital funds.
Item 12G is related and is consideration to approve a task order from Du Barry Engineers, teamed with Half Associates and Magnum Engineering, to provide engineering design services for the 274 hurricane recovery road segments in the amount of $277,500. At the October 28, 2025 City Commission meeting, the commission approved the evaluation panel's recommendation of the above specified engineering firms to provide engineering design services for the FEMA roads project, and authorized city staff to enter to negotiations on a task order for their professional services. The city's original request to FEMA was to repair roads that experienced a PCI loss of seven points or greater between the 2018 pre-hurricane Michael trans map report and the 2020 post hurricane Michael trans map report, a total of 675 road segments. Following the arbitration process, only road segments that had a PCI score of 56 and above before the hurricane and that experienced a PCI loss of 10 or greater were eligible for FEMA PA funding. The design for the roadway segment repairs under this task order would be for the road segments not captured by the FEMA roads project. Of the 675 original road segments, 351 were deemed eligible for repair following the arbitration process, leaving 324 damaged road segments remaining. Of those 324 remaining segments, approximately 50 segments will have already been repaired or are currently being repaired or about to be repaired as part of the city's multiple other infrastructure projects. This leaves 274 road segments that will be addressed under this task order, 271 which will be milled and overlaid, with the remaining three segments being fully reconstructed. And services to be provided under this task order include geotechnical borings at each of the roadway segments, limited survey data needed at the three full reconstruction segments, and initial engineering analysis of the results of the geotechnical borings, the roadway conditions and the survey data. After the initial engineering analysis is completed, an additional task order will be provided at that time to provide final designs, construction documents and bid documents. The fees for all the firms involved in the project are included within this task order. Staff recommendation through the Director of Public Works is that the commission approve this request, knowing that the funding will come from the infrastructure tax funds. Mr. Mayor?
I will entertain a motion to accept.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Commissioner Granger?
Yes.
Commissioner Street?
Yes.
Commissioner Hughes?
Yes.
Commissioner Lucas?
Yes.
Mayor Branch?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
All right. Item number 12H is discussion of the public-private partnership plan, process and other options moving forward with the city on property at 1300 and 1306 Beck Avenue, which totals just over one acre total. At the end of 2024, no, wait, early part of 2024, I was provided a memo to the commission to sell a number of properties as part of a long-term strategy in St. Andrews to enhance and increase parking. And selling of these two parcels was part of that. At a recent commission meeting, y'all voted to reject all offers for this and to withdraw the authorization that I had to sell this property and expressed an interest from the dais about potentially moving forward with a more of a P3 approach and strategy, which had previously been executed and attempted. So I just would like that direction tonight from the commission on how y'all would like to move forward so staff can start making preparations for this and hopefully hit the ground running at the beginning of 2026. Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, I this is such an important piece of property in St. Andrews, in my opinion. And we have amazing visioning documents by Dover Cole. I'd love to see us create the best P3 documents that bring clarity and excitement to anyone who's interested. I'd love to see us work with Neighborhood Revolution or Evolution, I can't remember which one it is, very affordable group that can look at our plans, give us multiple different concepts within a couple of days that can that will keep us from having this sort of debates of people who look to buy the property. They'll understand what the city would love to see. I don't care about incentives to get us there.
I would add, I fully agree. I would add that the one missing component of the the lot layout that could make this much more developable than what it is, is the the remaining piece. I think we've got the ability to exercise through continuing services contract that we just approved.
Well, huh?
Yep, well, height and approach them, seeing what that purchase price would be to square up.
That bottom right corner?
None he want to be in the deal, though?
I don't know.
That's what I keep here.
I don't know. It'd be a great opportunity to use our continuing services contracts for real estate agents to 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 turn them loose and see if we can get it squared up.
I'd like to add that the idea of hiring someone isn't to give someone a design, is to get a better product and of a building that aligns with our plans. And they should be excited because we basically are like, here's what we want. We can get you these entitlements quickly. It's already ready to go. And align these the vision documents that Denver Cole came up with.
Yeah, I think as we go through these and we look at these lots, just from a longer term perspective, you know, I was thinking when we talked about the dump truck just a little bit ago, you know, because we have access to equipment, because we have access to these things, we could help incentivize certain things moving forward by just participating. Maybe maybe we go and pick up the dirt that's on a low-lying lot that we need to kind of get it graded so that it's ready to build. In this scenario, maybe we're the ones to take on the complexity working with to assemble the thing, which I think has been been one of yours, is cities can be very strategic in incentivizing the right kind of development. And I do agree, this is this is Beck Avenue. It's right on the frontage. You know, I'd really probably not like to see a parking lot as the as the main frontage on Beck Avenue. I think we got enough parking lots along the the Beck Avenue frontage, some kind of liner building. But working with Neighborhood Evolution, I think is a great idea. I got introduced to those guys just a little bit ago. And they're very creative, and they're doing this around the country. And so if their price is affordable, that would be a good solution.
They're an offshoot of neighborhood level lots.
What's the name?
Neighborhood Evolution.
Evolution.
Neighborhood Evolution.
Yeah, there's actually a viral video of one of the founders went through Instagrams, got millions of views, where he took an old Kmart and divided it up and made it an incubator and took, yeah, it's it's been sent to me like 500 times by people.
Our old Kmart is a storage shop.
Mm hmm.
But.
And nice.
It's pretty.
The fastest garage door I've ever seen.
So we need to have a motion, a motion to move forward? I guess we do.
Yeah, I mean, I this is a wonderful conversation, but I would like some direction. I do want to just add for for the public's benefit and for the elected officials, because there was some comments made about, you know, prior purchasing. So after we went out, you know, for purchasing these, both Commissioner Street and I got, I would say, rushed by a large group of people in St. Andrews that expressed grave concern with not allowing to happen in St. Andrews what has happened in downtown Panama City where people purchase property and just sit on it for years on end without any improvements. And there was, I believe, legitimate concern that that could happen in St. Andrews. And then when we had folks expressed an interest in purchasing it, they wanted to do a parking lot. And again, we were surprised at that because, you know, this is prime commercial real estate right on Beck Avenue, and a parking lot is not necessarily the highest and best use. So the question was, the zoning would allow it. But, you know, okay, if y'all do that, then please make it look nice. Because if we're just going to keep it vacant with grass and gravel, then I could have just kept that as a city and had our guys mow it, you know, you know, once a month. And so a reasonable expectation was put forward that if you do want to do a parking lot, then it needs to follow the example that the city set with the three parking lots on the the west side of Beck Avenue. So just a little bit of history on that, you know, to where we are today. But no, I would, you know, I would like some some direction if you'd like us to go and and create some ideas. I guess, you know, if you're getting something specific from, I mean, if are we are we going to sell it and say, we'll only sell it to you if you're going to do A, B, and C, or something like ABC? I don't know if that's what you guys want. Yeah, I mean, so.
I think the Neighborhood Evolution had creating somebody that it that has done like this kind of element could create a framework rather than us just trying to take a stab in the dark, which is what happened on the previous P3. I mean, it was like, hey, here's property. Tell us what you want to do with it, that kind of thing. And ultimately, there were two very good ideas that were presented inside of those two proposals, but there was no financing and no ability to finance in either one of those proposals.
That's another one developed where it shows up here.
So that's why that's why that one fell apart. But I think I think, you know, giving you guys some tools and somebody to work alongside to kind of create those parameters, that would help us and I think help the staff to.
I think reaching out to the group and asking them to even help us write better P3s in general, not just with this one, but someone who's teaching us best practices of P3s. And so I would ask the staff to go out and get a bit of what does it cost that group for us to to write better our P3s because we're not getting them done. We put out P3s and no one responds, right? So we want what the goal is to have P3s. There's been a ton of people who are qualified or super excited, beating our doors down to do it. And so I'd like to see this group improve our P3s, not just in this one, teach us some P3 best practices, and then what the cost would be, whatever they think visually would be needed to make this a great P3. So I just would like to see this cost and come back to us.
So I'll make a motion to enlist, bring a spec cost on Neighborhood Evolution for creating P3 processes and helping us create better end products. But I would also add enlisting an agent to try and engage on that smaller piece of the parcel so that we can square this one up and hopefully get this thing across the finish line and see something really good happen with it.
Second.
Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Commissioner Granger?
Yes.
Commissioner Street?
Yes.
Commissioner Hughes?
Yes.
Commissioner Lucas?
Yes.
Mayor Branch?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Motion to adjourn.
Who's second? Hughes? Commissioner Granger?
Yes.
Commissioner Street?
Yes.
Commissioner Hughes?
Yes.
Commissioner Lucas?